When you guys sign up online.
Ready to unpause? All right. Good morning, everyone. So this is really exciting. I see P Devs. I see Ethan O'Brien. You know, Ethan's famous in this town. If you don't know Ethan, then you don't know anyone. Madeline Barack. This is unbelievable. Elliot Malin, so many of you. I'm really excited. Okay, this is great. We are going to start off the meeting with... Hold that one second. Okay, good, perfect. I love that. Okay, we are going to start up with the pledge of allegiance of the flag. Before we do that, I'm going to have Mike Keen lead us in the pledge because his dog, Keeks, is mayor for the day. And I want to say thank you to Mars Pet Care and Options Veterinary Clinic. Because Mars, yes, it went national this morning. So you are a superstar. What do you think of that?
He was a superstar already.
Already. All right. And I bet he can run the city way better than I can.
I don't know. He said he could.
He said he could. That's why we invited him today. Everyone knows that lately I've been having a series of future mayors. And I thought it would be fantastic to really highlight the incredible work that Options Veterinary Care does in our community. I don't know if many of you know them. But they started in a pandemic and they offer some of the best services so low-income families can continue to afford pet care. We're a very rare city to have that. I think Bonnie Brown, their executive director is here. I think there's only two or three of them in the nation of this type of model. So it's really rare. And the only way they can survive is with community donations. So if you love pets and you certainly love having your furry friends around, and especially, I know you've done a lot for our homeless population, our seniors. You do a lot for our seniors that live on fixed incomes. So we're going to have you do public comment. But before, we're going to start off with the pledge allegiance. And Mike is going to lead us in honor of Keeks as mayor of the day. Okay, let's take your way.
Where to play? Oh, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Can I get a bark? Can I get a bark? Oh. He's not a barker.
Sometimes.
Okay, sometimes. More of a kid.
When he wants to play frisbee.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send the meeting to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to call to order, call rolls for today's meeting, Wednesday, August 24th. Councilmember Breckus.
Here.
Dour.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Ward five vacant at this time. Reese.
Here.
Sheevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to send it right back to you for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first item on today's agenda is public comment. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. Our first public commenters today are Bonnie Brown and Mike Kenny.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor Sheevy and the entire council for having us here today. We are very grateful to Mayor Keeks as well. My name is Bonnie Brown, and I am on the Governance Committee of Options Veterinary Care. We are an affordable, low-cost nonprofit veterinary clinic in Reno. We're located on Longley Lane. For many of us, if our pets were suddenly sick, we would be able to charge the expense. But that is not the case for many of our fellow residents of Reno. And so our role is to fill that gap. We work individually with our clients, many of whom are senior citizens, disabled individuals, homeless people, and also low-income families and individuals who own pets. So as all of you surely know, pets are considered to be part of the family by most Americans. And they have tremendous value. Research has shown to both senior citizens, children, and disabled individuals as really valued members of their family and often best friends. So our work at Options involves partnerships with many community organizations. We work with Washoe County Regional Animal Services, the SPCA of Northern Nevada, CARES Campus, Safe Camp, Eddie House, and many other nonprofit agencies in our community that serve people. One reason why this is so important is to access many of these services. If you have a pet, you are required to have vaccines and a certificate of good health for your pet. So that is where Options comes in, helping people. Also, when people cannot afford veterinary care, another place they turn is to the local animal shelters. Pets who are sick or injured, when their owners cannot afford care, often end up turning to the animal shelters in the community. And these shelters are already overburdened presently with too many animals being surrendered. So we help keep beloved pets with the people who love them and the quality of life that that provides for those individuals. Also, we work with many local veterinary clinics across the community. Rather than competing with them, we actually provide a service. Veterinarians everywhere are stressed these days. There is a national veterinary shortage and a veterinary staffing shortage. This impacts Options, but it actually impacts all of the veterinary clinics in our community and beyond. And so when someone cannot afford care, that places a terrible burden on the local clinic. And it's a sad outcome for both veterinarians, their staff, and the owner when a pet has to be euthanized for purely economic reasons. Hence, we often receive referrals from local veterinary clinics. As I mentioned, the pandemic, the nationwide veterinary shortage, and inflation have really taken a toll on everyone. So our services are needed more than ever. And I would respectfully like to ask that as you're considering dispersing any discretionary funds or ARPA funding you may have, that you would consider funding Options Veterinary Care as well. We would use any such funds for Reno residents who could not afford veterinary care. And we are just very grateful to be part of the community and for all of your work that supports the community every day. So once again, thank you very much.
Before you leave, I just wanted to say, as the longtime chair of the Washoe County Animal Advisory Board, it was an honor and privilege to have a visit with Options staff and to make a donation there, one of the earliest during the pandemic. And we so appreciate what you do throughout. The Washoe County Animal Services Advisory Board oversees the Washoe County Animal Resources Center. And the Humane is right next door. And we have members of the SPCA on there and other animal advocacy groups. So we are so grateful for what you do and especially the work you do with the underserved population, people that cannot afford this. So thank you.
I don't want to chant this. Because if he goes, then I'm going to go.
I also wanted to say, a number of us are limited in our contributions until after the election. So just so you know, by half of us are not available.
Hey, so I want to say thank you so much. I don't think people realize that you are out in the community because you guys did start during a pandemic. Mike, I would love for you to say a few words why Options has been so important to you. He is the owner of Keeks a little bit, the one that you see that wants to jump a little bit. So come on up.
Good morning, everybody. I want to, first of all, thank you very much for the honor that you have bestowed upon Keeks. He's... Hey, sit down. Sit.
We've got bones over there, so he's a little preoccupied.
My name is Mike Keen, and I am blessed to share my home with Keeks and Little Bit. They are just wonderful, wonderful members of our family, myself and my wife Marty. I came to this, we came to this through Options Veterinary Care. I want to say, I cannot say enough about Options. They are wonderful. They take great care of our pets. The staff is completely wonderful. And the dog actually likes going to the vets, even if he's going to get a shot. But yeah, they're just great people, and I am so glad to see that there's some support here for them. Oh, thank you. And... Where's my wife? So anyways, and then I really want to thank again everybody here. Bonnie, it's nice to see you again. We've met before. And I also want to thank the crooked tail grooming who got him in on an emergency yesterday to groom him. She's a wonderful person, Jamie Lester, and she did a great job on him. And so he's nice and soft and smells pretty. And but that will all be over by the end of the day because we're going to go home and play frisbee, which is what he lives for.
That's what mayor should do. Go home, play frisbee.
He heard that.
Live on an acre, and he just dives in the dirt. There's a big dust cloud every time he does it. So I also want to thank the lady that I got him from... Her name is Gail Dedrick, Gail and Brett Dedrick. I got him when he was a little puppy, and she was wonderful. Keeks is actually, was born with a crooked tail, which was perfect for crooked tail grooming. I thought that was great. It was a birth defect. And so Gail thought that it would be a wonderful thing for me to have because I was looking for a pet. And she owns, just opened a bar here in town, Bar and Games.
Okay.
It's wonderful.
Well, thank you. I just want to really remind people, especially if you don't have a lot of money, then oftentimes that veterinary care does not happen. And that puts our pets in some horrific pain. We have seen that, some of the outcomes that happen whenever people cannot afford that care.
That's a major thing for me as a disabled person.
Yes.
I just live off a disability. That's not enough to live on.
Yes. And oftentimes, I've even seen where someone can be on the brink of homelessness because they pay for an exorbitant vet bill. So I would plead with our community. If you could do anything, please support Options because I think you guys are absolutely tremendous. And I don't believe you got any CARES Act money. Am I right? Okay, no. See, they didn't. And so I really want to do whatever I can to help raise awareness for what you're doing because it's really incredible. So thank you. All right. Well, thank you and congratulation, Keeks. The first thing I want you to do is go answer all my emails. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you. Do you know what? I do want to mention one thing. I heard that it's going to be someone's birthday soon. Is that true? I heard it's going to be yours.
Me?
Is that true? When is your birthday?
My actual birthday is September 5th, but my party is September 4th.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought it was today. I was like, we got to sing. We got to sing today for you. Anytime I can embarrass Ethan O'Brien. Anytime. Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next public commenter is Jerry Mifsud, followed by Perry DiLoreto, followed by Bishop Luther Dupree.
All right, come on up, Jerry. Where are you? Is Jerry here?
Jerry, are you going to make your way to the microphone?
Oh, there you are. Come on up.
My hearing is bad.
That's all right.
You got a match, Hillary?
There you go.
I've been told that I cannot talk directly to any one council member, but I could talk to the council as a group. You're not in a bubble here. When a city council member can single me out, then why can't I single any one of you out? But I'm told this now, after five years of coming up here and sharing good things and sharing concerning things, I can't even give one council member a compliment, as I'm told by the city clerk's office. This is terrible. You know the situation that we have at hand. I know that through talking to the fixer over there on the right, that you're all going to weigh in on what was done inappropriately, maybe. What was done was, the city council, since I can't mention his name, the city council tried to impose a non-existing dress code on me because my shirt was open. So today, just for you, Madam City Council, I'm wearing a shirt that's buttoned up, and I got a bow tie on. I hope that makes you all happy. Boring. But that should have never been done. What added insult to injury was a security guard was assigned to go to the city clerk's office. And the city clerk's office called me up and told me I was barred from City Hall. You know, this is within six, for six months. This is within six months. Why haven't you thrown me out yet? Okay, it's not going to happen today, is it? But you're going to try to impede my First Amendment right. That's not going to happen. Because of the city council trying to impose this, I consider that a dereliction of duty. It may cause for censorship or maybe a removal of any one particular city council member. But maybe, since I'm talking to a group, it removes all of you at one time. Eddie Lorton would really like that. You know, given that you're going to weigh in this, please, use a little compassion and understanding. This has taken a physical toll. I've been in the hospital by emergency vehicle three times. I did get a welcoming call, a "how are you, Jerry" call, from the fixer. I can't mention his name. A great guy. A conflict of interest has occurred. Oh, isn't this fun? We haven't fun yet. So physical and emotional damages. Are there punitive damages here? Keep all this under consideration when you all weigh in, because I'm told you're all individually going to weigh in. And I just, with all the work we've done, you don't want me to spiral on any downward than I have. I have plenty of work that I want to do. I want to thank you, Mr. Delgado, for allowing me to give you a call, to talk to you about the things in our neighborhood that you have stood up for and stood behind those seniors. And with that, I'm out of here.
Jerry. Thank you. Our next public commenter is Perry DiLoreto, followed by Bishop Luther Dupree, followed by Terry Brooks.
My turn.
It is your turn.
Good morning, everyone.
The one and only.
My name is Perry DiLoreto, and I appreciate the opportunity to give you my perspective on an upcoming, very important decision you're about to make, and that is with the selection process for our new chief of police. I've had the opportunity and experience to be involved with our police agencies at different levels. I've been on the advisory board for the chief for the last 12 years. I did attend the civilian police academy. I attended the FBI civilian academy. It's something, it's a subject that I'm very interested in. One thing I've come to learn, and I'd ask you, please, to all keep in consideration, is the concept of what we call community policing. Community policing has proven to be very effective, but we need to understand what does it mean. It's largely based on relationships. Relationships, the foundation of a good relationship is knowledge, it's trust, and it's respect. These elements come from a long-term process to get to know your community, to become embedded in your community, to understand the different cultural differences and the different perspectives that people have with respect to what goes on in our community. I believe that within the city of Reno and with our own police department, we have all the talent that is needed for a future selection. I'm not here to lobby on behalf of any one individual, but I know all of the talent that is available at every level from those very dedicated people who make their lives work policing, which, as we all know, is no easy job today. I am continually impressed with the professionalism and the dedication that I experience on a daily basis. This city council has done an amazing job, I believe, in supporting the police and making some very, very important decisions, which are reflective in the situations and the way things are handled here in Reno. By and large, when you look around the rest of the country and see what some cities are going through, the absence of that in Reno just doesn't happen. It's because of leadership provided at every level by you, by our managers, and by the head of our police departments and our command staff. So in closing, I would like to strongly encourage you to look within our own police department as you move forward with your next selection. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Perry.
Bishop Luther Dupree, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Seis Armanera.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. I trust you can hear me. I've had multiple surgery on my vocals, so my speech is a little impaired. But I thank you for the honor of being here today and to come before the council. I'm here also to speak in behalf of our selection for our next police chief. I was at home the other day and happened to be looking at the news, and I saw Chief Soto getting, kind of saying farewell. He's wanting to retire, et cetera. And I want to certainly share my feeling as to... I think Perry DiLoreto just set the tone for really what I want to say. And I did owe everything that he says concerning looking within. I have five people in my family that wear the shield around the country. One in Las Vegas, two in Oakland, and two in South Carolina. And so I kind of understand the heartbeat of some of this. But I certainly think, rather than spending $25,000 or $30,000 looking around the country to try to select qualified people to serve this community, I certainly feel that we have the proper talent. We have the necessary people right among us that probably can serve the office very well. When Chief Soto was selected, we came and voiced our opinion. And I thought the council made a wise choice by selecting him. And I also would like to maybe express personally, speak in behalf of Oliver Miller, deputy chief. I know that he is running for the office, and I'm certainly in support of him. I serve about five churches under my jurisdiction here in Northern Nevada for our church, which is worldwide, and in about 130-something different countries. It's over 150-some years old, so, I mean, 115 years old, the church. And so therefore, I've been involved with a lot of things going on. But I certainly would just like to say that we would appreciate the council, that they would look at what we have and deal with people that's been in our area that have the heartbeat of the community, know the community, are known in the community. And certainly, we have seemingly an open door policy that we can talk to them. And if thing going wrong or where we might feel a little out of character in our community, we can call and make call and have an audience. So I would like to just say to the council and all of you that are doing a great job, please consider, rather than wasting taxpayers' money and looking around the country, look within and let us select from what we have. And I certainly think we have qualified candidates for the job. Bless you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Terry Brooks, followed by Seis Armanera, followed by Joseph Bach.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address politics and employment when it comes to homelessness. Some politicians say the poor do not want to be employed. Others say that the poor lack opportunities to be employed. Some say that programs that help the poor only encourage more poverty, while others say that our society and our economy are structured against those in poverty. The poor often provide the wealthy with a surplus of labor when needed. So the wealthy do their best to keep wages low, below what the poor have needed. Technology is taking jobs away from a lot of people. The wealthy own some factories where robots work a lot cheaper than people. Machines and robots can work without needing health care. But when people are working, they really need health care. People need to be paid at least minimum wages and get paid overtime. But robots and machines don't get paid even when they work overtime. So those who say the poor don't want to work blame the poor for their own poverty. But those who say the poor do want to work try to help them rise out of poverty. But those who say the poor do want to work try to help them rise out of poverty. So they try to provide unemployment benefits for those who are unemployed, while also providing them with training programs to help them to get employed. They not only focus on getting people out of poverty, but they also focus on preventing the causes of such poverty. But those who say it's poor people's own fault that they have been so poor, want them to keep providing cheap labor, so they want them to stay poor. But those who say it's not their own fault that they are so poor, try to give them opportunities so they will no longer be poor. We seem to live in an environment where the rich keep wanting more, and when they get what they want, they wind up getting it from the poor. I would like to thank you all for listening to me, and I look forward to coming back if a robot will not speak for me. If I was a robot, I would not approve this message, but if I was a dog, I know I'd approve this message. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. What number are we on?
Oh, this is chapter thirty-seven, so there's nine more to go.
Okay. Good job. Thank you.
Cesar Manera, followed by Joseph Bach, followed by David Oberg.
Good mor, good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council members. Uh, first of all, I'm really glad to be back here. You know, it has been a couple of years because of COVID, and I'm glad to see every single one of you and that you guys are doing well. And also letting you know that the churches in the area have been praying for you, for your families, for the community. Uh, we, we always keep you in our minds, and you guys are a priority when it comes to prayer. Uh, some of the members from AMEN, which is the Hispanic pastors association from our region, which means Carson, Reno, Sparks, uh, we're here to show support and recommend Deputy Chief Miller for the position of a police chief. I provided a letter that will get into your hands eventually. And if I just give you some highlights, I've worked with, closely with the police department for almost over ten years, at different levels with the officers, doing dinners for them for Thanksgiving. I've served eight years on the chief advisory board, and not only as a pastor of several churches in the area, but as a city leader. Um, I've worked with the department, and I've seen the intricacies, the difficult times that sometimes they go through. And just like Perry DiLoreto and Bishop Dupree mentioned, I think it's extremely important that we look inside of the department. Reason being, if we're, if we're to bring someone from the outside, it would take them a couple of years before they really get to know the ins and outs of the police department. We strongly believe that Deputy Chief Miller has what it takes, the professionalism. He has worked closely with the faith community, with the Hispanic community. He has earned our respect, and we are recommending him. He has, like, as I mentioned just shortly, what, what it takes to do the job. He knows the department inside out, and we're here recommending him for that position. Thank you, and it's great to see you all.
All right, thank you.
Joseph Bach, followed by David Oberg, followed by Crystal Manera Alvis.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's an honor to be here today. Uh, my name is Joseph Bach, and I'm the associate pastor at Faith Alive Christian Center right here in Reno. I've been a Reno resident for a good twenty-five years now. And today I'm here representing Northern Nevada Pastors Fellowship. Uh, we do, I have a letter I'd like to read that has been submitted as well for you guys to look at later, but this is addressed to the City Council of Reno. Northern Nevada Pastors Fellowship is a consortium of thirty different churches and ministries here in Washoe County, representing many thousands of people. We have met together weekly for over twenty years, praying for you, this valley, and our nation. We would like to take the time to give our public support to Deputy Chief Oliver Miller for the chief of police position here in the city of Reno. DC Miller has interacted with us as a group and with us individually on many occasions over the years. He's always shown the utmost professionalism and respect in every situation. He has shown the capacity for many years to lead well and to support us in the faith community, and not just word, but indeed as well. We also recognize his personal and public character and integrity, which has led him to the pinnacle of his profession, and hopefully will keep him there at an even higher position. It's our great honor to stand with our friend DC Ollie and the furtherance of his dedication to this valley and his law enforcement career. And I'd like to just say, on a personal note, I've had opportunity to know DC Ollie over the years, and just to see him even interact with my family on a personal level and how he's treated them with the most respect, and, you know, taking time with my, even my children that were, you know, leaning into possibly doing policing, meant a lot to me personally, so not just as an organization. And I know, you know, even for me, he completely has my support for chief. And I have two friends here me from the, or here, friends here with me from Northern Nevada Pastors Fellowship that are gonna share something as well.
All right. Welcome.
Pastor Dan Simma from University Family Fellowship. Having seen the Reno Police Department and how well it's worked in talking with individuals that are truly involved with everything going on there, we, we feel like Pastor Soto put a really good system in place here in Reno, and why step away from it, but let someone who's been brought up in the system be put into place to run it still. So I think we're just an example for all the other police departments around our nation here, and we're just, we're gonna back Oliver Miller, so.
Rick Fair from Living Waters Christian Fellowship, pastor there for seventeen years and wrestling coach in northern Nevada for over twenty-five years. Uh, what's interesting, in a recent lunch with Oliver Miller, we, he and I discovered that I was a one-time coach to him back at Reed High School. So anybody that would enter into wrestling and advance the way that he has and maintain a part of this community has definitely got my support, so I just wanna encourage you.
Thank you.
David Oberg, followed by Crystal Manera Alvis, followed by Christopher Schneider.
Good morning. My name is David Oberg. I'm the senior pastor of Faith Alive Christian Center, and I'm here to echo what's already been spoken concerning Deputy Chief Ollie. And so, um, to the City Council of Reno, Honorable Mayor Hillary, um, it is without hesitation that we, from Faith Alliance of, for community engagement, give our full support for Deputy Chief Oliver Miller in his bid for chief of police in Reno, Nevada. We've had the opportunity to sufficiently assess the character of DC Miller for a decade in his service to Reno Police Department. Through his personal interaction with us, he has shown himself to care for the needs of the faith community, and having done so with great respect and care. This has shown itself in times of celebration and crisis both, as we have served this great community together. No one else that we are aware of knows the community and especially the Reno Police Department like DC Miller. His leadership in this city at the top level of law enforcement would benefit everyone in this community, and we look forward to his continued service. And I also wanna add, is I wanna say thank you, each one of you, for your service here, and we pray for you continuously, and we appreciate all that you do. God bless you.
Crystal Manera Alvis, followed by Christopher Schneider, followed by Pat Gallimore.
And look at this. You have a new addition.
Yeah, I wanted to bring the future mayor of Reno to her first city council meeting. That's why she came dressed up.
Oh, isn't she adorable?
To make a good impression. Thank you. Um, so I'm here, um, first of all, on my behalf, um, I've obviously been in the community for a little over thirty years, won't give my exact age, but, um, and I'm also here just to recommend and also endorse Deputy Chief Oliver Miller. You know, when we look to fill these positions in our own community, such as the ones that you guys are sitting in today, we look within, and we want our city council to be reflective of our community. And I think we should do similar when we're looking to fill this position of chief of police. We want it to be someone that reflects our community, as Bishop Dupree said, that has a heartbeat. Often it's said, oh, we need new, new blood, fresh blood, but someone that comes in from outside doesn't have our Reno DNA. Um, so I really do recommend him. I've known him as a, you know, as a friend. I've also known him on the professional level. I own a couple of businesses in Reno, and I truly believe now that, you know, as our families are growing, that we have to look towards the future. We're not just selecting him for right now, we're creating a standard and setting a precedent for the future. And I do believe that our city is in the best hands if we make him as the selection for chief of police. And I'm also here on behalf of Pastor Brent Brooks. He wasn't able to make it, but I do wanna read a letter that he sent to all of you, and I will believe you will all be having as well. And it says, "To the members of the Reno City Council, please accept this letter as my hearty endorsement of Deputy Chief Oliver Miller for promotion to the chief of Reno Police Department. I have known and interacted with him on multiple occasions over the last sixteen years. Several times, we have participated on the same panel dealing with community and multicultural issues. During this time, he has repeatedly shown himself to be wise, thoughtful, competent, articulate, well-informed, and sensitive to the needs of the community. Deputy Chief Oliver Miller has the respect and endorsement of all who have dealt with him. I do not believe you can possibly find a better candidate, and you will certainly not find one who is more grounded in and knowledgeable of our community. Feel free to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Pastor Brent Brooks." Brooks, who is also the president of Partners, Partners for Pastors. So thank you so much for your time, and we hope that we can make the right choice.
It is so nice to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you.
I think we forget that it's been so long, and, I mean, just, are you a proud grandpa? You've got, and a proud dad, too, right?
Yes.
What's your name?
Her name is Elihanna.
Elihanna.
Tell her the meaning.
Her name means my God is grace.
My God is great.
Grace. Yes.
That is so beautiful.
Yes.
Well, she is priceless.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's so nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can you, and maybe the city manager will remind us, and for the people in the audience, we have a number of community engagement meetings going on about the police chief recruitment. I think Councilmember Dewar was one, at one on Monday night out at the South Valleys Library. There's a virtual one today at noon. I think there is one on the twenty-fifth, and then a bilingual focus one on the twenty-seventh. So it's a great opportunity for all these folks to be able to make sure that they are engaged in those processes as well.
One, one correction, though, I think all of the engagement meetings are at five-thirty, not at noon. At least it's on my calendar. It says, we, maybe we could ask, but.
So.
It's five-thirty, but anyway, it seems like they all are, and there's even one on
Mrs. Sparza is here, and she will give an update on the, where we're at in the process and what the outreach process looks like and where there are opportunities to participate, and when.
Perfect. Good morning, Cynthia Sparza, for the record. Uh, this week really kicked off the public engagement process for the chief of police recruitment. Uh, two meetings have been held. There is one today at noon. It's virtual. Uh, there will be one tomorrow at the North Valleys Library at five-thirty, followed by one on Saturday at the Neil Road Recreation Center. Um, in addition to that, excuse me, I wasn't prepared for this. Uh, there is a survey available online that opened last week, uh, in, when the press release was released, uh, that is available until September thirtieth. It's available in English and in Spanish, and if community members need paper copies, we could also provide that as well. And throughout the process, um, we'll provide updates via press releases, social media, and updates on reno.gov/chiefofpolice. In addition to that, we also have an email address that is being managed by the recruiter, where the community could provide input, ask questions throughout the entire process. Um, so once again, everything's on reno.gov/chiefofpolice, um, and we'll be actively posting on social media outlets as well.
And so, Mrs. Sparza, so that's all relevant in terms of what we're trying to do in terms of candidate profile and the work up there, uh, and of course, there's been outreach by the recruiter into the police department.
Correct.
Explicitly, that's going on this week. Would you expand upon what the process is going to look like moving forward with respect to interview panels and how we're going to get to sort of narrowing the field and ultimately making a selection?
Correct. Um, excuse me, apparently I need water. Uh, there is several, or are several meetings taking place this week, um, including meetings within the police department. The recruiter has established almost like office hours where RPD could stop by and provide input. Um, there is also a survey specific to the department as well. Um, and really, the, the engagement process that is currently underway is to help identify the top characteristics and attributes that the community would like to see in their future chief of police, um, as well as prioritizing public safety with, in the city of Reno. Public safety is a top priority, uh, and the input provided by the community will really assist the recruiter as the process continues.
And so, once that candidate profile is, is created and the position is opened to applications, um, it's our hope that we'll have a robust candidate pool and that we'll be able to, um, narrow down the field to a competitive group for interview panels. And the interview panels will include, um, external stakeholders, internal stakeholders, and, um, internal sworn in civilian inside RPD. There, so there'll be three separate interview panels that will then sit together and create a pros and cons list of each candidate. And hopefully, we'll be able to use that information to put the best candidate in front of you.
Okay. Perfect.
Just a note, it was on our calendar, but while you were speaking, it moved from five-thirty tonight to twelve. So I think that was just a miscoding.
I'm sure someone's listening, um, but since I am here and questions did come up, I would really implore the community to take the survey if you can't attend a meeting. I mean, the survey, uh, will really help develop what the process is and what the key traits and public safety priorities are.
And I would just say, it is one of the most important positions that we fill in the city, so we are looking for as much community engagement as possible. So, and also, are you putting that on our website?
Yes. All the information is on reno.gov/chiefofpolice.
Okay. All right. Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to say thank you to all the folks that are here today, and make sure that you do do the survey as well. You do do. So, um, anyway, appreciate you all being here, and I'm sure we all do.
Well, and Mrs. Sparza, thank you for pinch hitting. I, it wasn't my intention to derail the conversation, but when people come to make public comment, it's super important that they know, um, that, that what we're doing, and, and some may be leaving before we could get to that moment, so I wanna make sure everyone knew what was available. Um, I've met with the police recruiter. It, it's been a good process, um, but it's very impressive to have people here this engaged, especially so early, stay engaged, right? Um, and, and certainly participate in this process because it will help us down the road. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for the indulgence.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm clerk, sending it right back to you.
Christopher Schneider, followed by Pat Gallimore, followed by Donald Gallimore Sr.
Hi, good afternoon. I, I am Christopher Robert Schneider, and I was.
Christopher?
Yes, ma'am.
If you wouldn't mind speaking into the microphone, please?
Is this much better?
Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Uh, one year ago, I was relocated. I was relocated from the Castaway Motel. I'm one of those people. I was relocated where I signed this lease. I like to pay my rent, and I like to work. Unfortunately, I was thrown out of my apartment without due process. There has been nothing inside the courthouse that filed with my name as an eviction or eighty-six, being eighty-sixth. I have since lost my job. I've lost all of my possessions, and I'm at my wit's end. I live under a tree, and I have, everything I own is in this bag. I need help. If I am ignorant of the law, that is my fault. It is my duty as a citizen to know the law, but pure blatant disrespect by, by Cromer investments into your guys' faces, they should go to prison too, because if I did that, I would go to jail. All I want to do is go home. Blatant disregard to the laws is not acceptable. Help me, please. Help me, please. I just want to go home.
Jenica.
I just want to go home.
Sir, Jenica and Elaine will be able to point you in the right direction. They'll be able to help you right over here.
I thank you very much, and my attire would be much better if I could go to my home. All right. Thank you much.
You need a quick motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we appoint Councilmember Reese as Vice, or Vice...
Acting Vice Mayor. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Gallimore, welcome.
Hello. Hi, there. Hi, good morning. Well, the mayor's leaving, but hey, and this is the city council. My name is Patricia Gallimore. I am the First Vice President for the Reno Sparks NACP. The reason I'm here today is just to speak about community, right? Community first. And when we talk about community, we really need to get down to the basics of community policing and 21st century policing policy as well. And also inclusion, and I said this last night, but I went to the, so I'm a very well-informed community member, so I've gone to the meetings, the engagement meetings. I've also done the survey already, so, and then I'm sending out emails and blasts to all of the members of my branch, as well as community members, to let them know this process is available. Because a lot of times, yeah, everybody will say, "Go to the website, go do this, go that." But if it doesn't come personally as the invitation for somebody, they don't do that. So, when I attended the engagement process last night, my question was, I'm a numbers person. Where's the statistical data when we do an outside search for a Chief of Police that it actually, the process actually works? And when did it come apparent that what is happening in this community in terms of choosing and selecting our police chiefs, that we did not like our police chiefs, or we had issues with that process that we were doing, that we had to step outside the process and go and do an outside agent? And that kind of sort of wasn't brought to the community until after the fact, or either I didn't find out. And as I said, I'm pretty well-informed, so I kind of know what's going on. But I am in opposition to having an outside agency go out. As I said, I went to the engagement meeting already, so I kind of know the process. I asked about statistical data, making something, validating the data of how, when we select these outside agencies, that these police chiefs that we select are better than the ones that the community could do it on their own. And there's no statistical data out there to that reference. That's what they told me last night. So, I implore you all here this morning to actually listen to the community, listen to the people. I am in favor of Deputy Chief Oliver Miller as being selected as the, you know, or going through the process and looking at him as being a very well-qualified individual for this position. I think it's very, very important, with us being somewhat of a bedroom community, somewhat of a small community, that we have community people from, that understand this community, what Reno is and is about, okay? That's very, very important. I've been here for 31 years. I've raised my family here. My family has given back to the community, and my husband will be stepping up. So, I appreciate you giving us this time, and also the process. I will probably get on something in terms of going through that process of interviewing the police chief. I feel that it's that important that I'm involved, so I'm stepping out of my zone of somewhat semi-retirement and coming back and doing more into the community, because it's that important that we select someone from this community, that's for this community to do the policing. And thank you this morning for being here. Appreciate it.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Don Gallimore, Sr., and I'm speaking now as Second Vice President of the Reno Sparks National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NACP. And I can wear many hats around town, but this is very important to us, because basically, we've attracted or incorporated the 21st Century Community Policing Task Force model that President Obama had introduced. And that's something, I'm a child, a prodigy of a career policewoman and juvenile court probation officer, so I've been a member of the family for, the family for all my life. And I believe that PC Oliver Miller would probably be our best bet. I do understand the potential transparency issues that would have to go through national, you know, a national search. But I think that, as my wife said, we've tried to look at what the protocol is, and there is no real protocol as to what, how we hire a chief. So, and at least, that's not what they've told us thus far. So, we're in favor of just going ahead and sidestepping that transparency perceived issue, and go ahead and see if we can get a local. And I do think that we do prefer Chief, Police Chief, Deputy Chief Miller. So, you know, other things, I just am glad to be here. For the most part, we're gearing up for the legislature, so anybody who needs any information, support, just give us a call.
Pastor Deborah Lacks, followed by Dr. Norris Dupree, followed by Nathan Dupree.
Good morning, Council. My name is Pastor Deborah Whitlock Lacks. I am the pastor of Bethel AME Church, the oldest African-American church in Nevada, 117 years. There's a song I want to sing to you, and it really has to do with all of us in this room, as well as northern Nevada. I need you, you need me. We're all a part of God's body. Stand with me, agree with me. We're all a part of God's body. It is His will that every need be supplied. You are important to me. I need you to survive. Last year, I reached out to Chief Soto after a major decision in our country. He immediately sent me Deputy Chief Oliver Miller, who has not left my side, who has connected me to many of you. One day, we were meeting. It was about the courageous conversations with the sisters-to-sisters, courageous conversations, where we brought all of the law enforcement into the community at my church. There was a knock on my door. There was a woman in distress. And although our church is in Sparks, I saw firsthand Deputy Chief Miller of Reno engage, a woman who, he didn't have to do that. He stopped what we were doing, and he put first things first. He started making phone calls on her behalf to make sure that she had the resources. She was an unsheltered woman, or a woman on the edge, the edge of suicide ideation, or having suicidal ideation. She was on the edge of having to deal with her child. She was experiencing domestic violence. And I sat back, and I watched Officer Miller transition from a business meeting to a person who sincerely cared about a woman he had no connection with, who he had no reason, he was in Sparks. I believe in community policing, and if we are going to maintain our community police, we need to let them know that we're not going to go outside looking for the best for Nevada.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Norris Dupree, followed by Nathan Dupree.
Hello. My name is Dr. Norris Dupree, and Madam Hillary Sheevey, and to all the councilmen and councilwomen, I thank you for this opportunity. Working with law enforcement has been a privilege for me. I have worked with law enforcement for approximately 10 years. I started off with Chief Pitts, and part of it was, I was concerned about what was going on inside our nation. And I reached out to Chief Pitts, and I said, "Chief Pitts, we need to do something as a community." Chief Pitts invited me to his office, and there, we had a courageous conversation. Chief Pitts admitted to me that he was not perfect, and that he could have done some things different, and he wanted to start it to turn things around, and he believed that it started with community. There, we held a community meeting with pastors and local leaders. And then Chief Pitts retired, and Jason Soto was selected. And there, when we're talking about working together, we developed a race symposium that many of you attended. Not only did we develop a race symposium, but also, we developed a breakfast where law enforcement and the pastoral leaders came together. During the race symposium, these are the things that happened because of the race symposium. Number one, there was transparency. We worked in collaboration between community and law enforcement, and because of that, there was a 14-day establishment concerning police shootings that was established. When I first went in, I remember talking to Chief, and he was like, "I don't think you're going to get your desired, your desires met, or the family desires met." But we came to a conclusion, and I worked with the city officials. We developed community boards. Right now, I sit on the community board with Sheriff Balaum. We developed the first report, which is the GWIN report. It's a collaborative report with police agencies. We are in the process of hiring minorities that is reflective of the community, and this is just reflective of our collaboration. Today, I do come to support Deputy Chief Miller. His credentials speak for themselves. He grew up here, he's invested in the community, he's a veteran, he's educated, he has a rapport with the community, he has a different lens, and he is a hard worker. We have worked together. We have developed trust, and we continue to develop trust. Let's keep the trust going with Deputy Chief Oliver Miller. Thank you.
Nathan Dupree.
Well, hello.
Well, hello.
Madam Mayor, good morning. Good to see you. Good to see you, Reno City Councilman. I really, kind of an honor and a pleasure and a privilege to be here today. I am here to speak on the selection of our next Chief of Police. And I wanted to speak about, first, one of the things is, I'm the president of ACON, which is the African-American Clergy Council of Northern Nevada, and we have many of those representatives here today. And we're really excited about where Reno is and where Reno is going. I think we have a great opportunity here to just show that Reno is progressing, and Reno is a place that's going to where we need to be. And I was thinking about what Norris just said. I have had the honor also of working with our chiefs, Chief Stephen Pitts, and had those same conversations that Norris talked about with him. And I've had the great opportunity and privilege also of working with Chief Soto, and we have just developed great community action steps and plans together, and it has been truly, truly awesome to be working with these chiefs. And as we approach this new selection of a chief, I am, again, here in support of Deputy Chief Oliver Miller. I just wanted to say a few things about him. You know, what I've seen from Deputy Chief Oliver Miller is competence. Like, he have invested in himself. He has obtained certification after certification. He's obtained degree after degree, and we've just seen great things of him investing in himself to be competent in a position like this. And not only his competence, but his leadership. I just remember recently, here in our city, we had some riots that were going on around the city, and I was able to be in the Reno Police Department station, and I saw his leadership of what he commanded of his officers, and not only that, but what he communicated to the executive staff, and how he stood in a place of just leading our city in that time. And we all know, just as you sit in those seats, that we need great leadership, and he's someone that gives us that. But one of the most important things I know about him, and I see about him, and you know this primarily, is his character. Character is huge. It's a big thing, you know, his honesty, his integrity, and his posture about just equity, and justice, and fairness. And so, I truly hope that we are looking at him as a serious candidate for the next Chief of Police. He's been someone, again, who's just worked alongside of this community, is internal, you know? And I think it's a huge statement to our community when we look at people who have just worked hard and put themselves in a position like this to be considered, you know? And I just think about what it'll do for our city, you know? I remember, just personally, me, as a black man here in the city of Reno, I was principal for a day at a school. And I remember these little kids, they were looking at me like, "You're our principal for the day?" And their eyes lit up. It's like, they could dream of just obtaining, just, the sky was the ceiling, you know, of what they could obtain. And I know things like that that happen in our city does that for so many, and I just hope, you know, that he is a serious candidate for us as we look at the next Chief of Police. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, Nathan.
Madam Mayor, it should be noted additionally, Shay Gilliam is in the audience. He does not wish to speak, but he is also in favor of Oliver Miller as Police Chief. For the record, we did receive four comments, which were general in nature and not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, August 23rd. These were written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office, and copies of them can be accessible through Reno.gov. Two items, or two correspondents in favor, and two in concern of various topics. Additionally, we have one voicemail, which we'll transition to now.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, today is Friday, August 9th, about 10 minutes till 4:00. I was recently calling this because, you know, everywhere, every time you go around to the store to buy something, you know, you see higher prices every time, and all you hear from people, and they keep checking up the prices, you know? Somebody got to do something about it. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to afford to buy anything, especially Costco has the highest price, and you pay for membership. I mean, they always make excuses about something, you know, but, I mean, they just keep raising and raising the price, that, you know, somebody got to do something about it, you know, push it up, too, you know? Because they're ripping off people. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment. We're moving on to Item A4, Approval of the Agenda.
At this time, I'm going to ask councilmembers to approve the agenda.
Wait.
Oh.
Wait.
I guess we're going to, our city manager, like, throw me for updates. Sorry.
At the request of the applicant, I need to pull Item D2, Delta 2. It's a street renaming. The applicant has asked that it be removed from the agenda. They have some alternate path that they'd like to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve with the minute changes?
Okay, thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to... All right, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to our B items, our consent agenda items. So at this time, I'm looking for disclosures or items to be pulled.
What it... Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Weber. Do you have any items you'd like to pull off the agenda? Okay. Councilwoman Doer.
Well, on behalf of my colleague here and myself, I'll pull item B16.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilman Delgado.
B2.
Okay. Councilman Reese?
Nothing, Madam.
Councilwoman Breckus?
I will pull item B12 and B8. I'll read the disclosure.
Okay, thanks so much. At this time, please give me a motion to approve all other items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, our first item pulled today is item B2 by Councilmember Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason I'm bringing this item forward is, in the past, we as a council have... I just want to stay consistent on this. In the past, we've denied privileged licenses if they are adjacent to or directly near to a drug or alcohol counseling. As I recall, we denied a convenience store in front of Hopes. We approved a dispensary adjacent to a counseling in Virginia. I know, just being aware of the community, that this location would be adjacent to the children's cabinet. I know at times nonprofits change their programs in terms of how they come and what they get funded for and so forth. So just, did we check in with any drug or alcohol counseling facilities as this is adjacent to, I know, to the cabinet and so forth? I can't speak to ones that have been grandfathered in. I know we have one right down the street and so forth. But as new ones come forward, I just want to stay consistent, make sure that I'm part of the record.
Absolutely, thank you. Angela Fu, Assistant Director for Development Services. We did look for any drug and alcohol facilities as defined by NRS. And so that's the way that the code reads. There are other resource facilities, like the children's cabinet, but they are not technically defined as a drug and alcohol rehab facility. There's actually a list that the state puts together and they're not on that list. And they do provide a number of services, but based on how we define drug and alcohol, again, based on state law, they did not qualify as that particular use.
Sorry to put, and I believe Angela, you weren't here during this time. So I hate to put this right on your shoulders. I don't believe Northern Nevada Hopes is also established as a rehab facility. And rehab would probably be where you'd stay for a bit, potentially, or if it's an outpatient. I don't necessarily know if they'd be considered in NRS as well.
And that, I do not know. We could pull that up under a separate item. But yeah, for the way that this packaged alcohol ordinance, the one that was adopted in January, it specifically identifies drug and alcohol as identified per state law, NRS. And there's a NRS reference. And so when we go to that NRS reference, it then differs to a list provided by the state. And so that's the list we use.
Gotcha. Yeah, thank you for that clarity. Madam Mayor, I mean, it's my word, I'd prefer if we pull it and get a little bit more information. However, I could understand if you guys would like to move forward. I'm not necessarily comfortable moving forward without that proper information. Just want to stay consistent with what's been in front of me. But all you understand is, how are you? Would you like to move forward on that?
Councilman Delgado, is that a motion? Because I will second it.
Yeah, that'd be a motion to continue the item to receive further information as to what other programs are adjacent or nearby.
And I appreciate that because I was pretty vocal about putting a marijuana dispensary right next door to a drug rehab facility. And I know that we also had the one over there by Hopes. So I want to make sure that we're paying attention of where we're placing these packaged liquor licenses.
Lance Frato, for the record, just for clarity, what exactly would you hope that we would bring back so that I can be sure we have the appropriate information?
Just, so any type of counseling or grants or services that they do adjacent to the 7-Eleven? Just that clarity. I don't know if there's other programs you're saying to, I just...
And is it residential there?
There is residential, right, directly adjacent to, yes. There's an apartment, no, condos.
Condos.
But also, is there residential with the children's cabinet? Do they?
No, they don't do residential, not at that location anyways. They do...
That's my knowledge.
Yeah. Again, I know nonprofits change, programming changes, funding changes. Again, Lance and Angela, I know, you guys just, this is previous to your guys' positions and your roles currently. I just want to make sure I'm consistent.
Yeah, I do have, and this just came from the children's cabinet website, just to give us a better idea of the types of programs that they provide. It does include parenting classes, childcare subsidy assistance, childcare resource and referrals, onsite food pantry, onsite high school, free family counseling, wraparound case management, workforce development, and crisis intervention. So definitely a wealth of a resource with a number of different types of services. But the one specific to drug and alcohol is not part of their services, at least that they describe in their work program.
Can you refer to them, Angela?
Yeah, we could even pull it later in the agenda. I'll call the executive director during break.
Sure, yeah.
We could do that, too.
May I ask a question?
Thank you so much.
I think I drove by this the other day. Is it, it's a new site that's getting graded out, correct? It's on an intersection?
So it's built.
It's built. Is it new, though?
It is new.
Okay, so I did go by. So when he says adjacent, since it's on an intersection, there isn't a lot of adjacency. So what are you going to look into?
Yeah, I think the question has to do with specifically the facility on the street that's adjacent. So the facility, the childcare, what is it called?
Children's cabinet.
Children's cabinet is the specific one we're talking about. It is within 500 feet of the 7-Eleven. So the question is, does the children's cabinet provide services that would qualify as drug and alcohol resource?
Under the ordinance.
Correct.
And it's within 500 feet, but it's essentially on that same intersection, on a different corner of that intersection?
It is.
Yeah, I looked at the case maps. Okay.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, sending it right back to you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item B8, pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus.
It's been, full transparency, item B8, disclosing that my husband, Armon Dennis, is the community service director for the city of Sparks. Item B8 is a proposed consulting agreement for design services with Brown and Caldwell for the Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, Tom Wharf Digestor Number 4 Cover Replacement Project in the amount of $517,000. Based on the city's joint ownership of the facility and existing cost-sharing agreement, Reno's going to pay $355,000. Sparks will pay the rest. On this matter, I've talked to the city attorney's office. And because Sparks and Reno have an existing cost-share agreement and the parties share the same public regional wastewater goals and objectives, my commitment in a private capacity to the interest of my spouse as an employee of the city of Sparks would not clearly materially affect the independent judgment of a reasonable person in my position to warrant abstention under an NRS 281-423. And you can see in the matter of Public Officer Commission Opinion 2012-15A-2012, a public officer has a responsibility to represent constituents' vote on matters of public. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting's subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that. All right, I have a motion. Second. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are going to head over to item B12, I believe. Am I right? Yeah. B12. Yeah, I think it was...
This was pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, this is... Hi. I'll let you come on up and introduce yourself.
Hi, Cody Shadle, manager for Reno Public Safety Dispatch.
Oh, okay, great. So, and this is an agreement, so we're going to start dispatching for the Tahoe Airport?
Correct, that's what the local agreement requests.
Does your dispatch division have the ability to take on this new task? I understand you have six vacancies right now?
Yes, we do. At the time they reached out to us, we did a cost analysis, service and needs assessment. And based on their call volume, the historical workload that we looked at, and the proposal that we gave them of integrating their services into the current dispatch structure, we feel that their addition would be minimal and not at the sake of our staff.
Did you have anyone this weekend on Forest overtime?
Yes, we frequently have Forest overtime most days.
Yeah, I, you know, I want, I really think that this is important, but I think dispatch, and it's no reflection to you, obviously, we've never met you before, and welcome to our organization. But I think dispatch is broken in many ways. And I am very concerned about taking on more load when we just cannot fill those bodies and we're forcing that team to do overtime regularly. I object and I will not be supporting this. Thank you. Madam Mayor. Thank you. Cody, welcome.
Thank you.
It's so nice to see you. I just want to say, because this is something that I follow intimately. First of all, I want to commend the Reno-Tahoe Airport for being a fantastic partner. This is something that we've looked at for years. And it needed to happen because the way in which they were dispatched, it kind of goes through this really bizarre system and quite honestly, is super dangerous. You might want to give a little bit of background of why you are the expert and you're very good at what you do. But you might want to give a little background on why you think it is best.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to go from some of the key points. I don't have a presentation for you today.
That's fine, don't worry about it. You're great. And like I said, you're the expert. But I think maybe the council forgets, because remember, we kind of went down this path three years ago, so...
Absolutely. So, as I stated before, we did do a cost analysis, needs assessment. Their call volume and historical workload is such that we can incur it into our current structure. That means, as it stands now, they operate less than one call a day, comparatively to Reno Fire Department, who's running upwards of 40,000 calls a year. So incurring less than one call a day is something that we can do very minimally. Also, we'd be bringing them into our system, putting them on shared resources with Reno Fire and allowing us to use the existing dispatch resources that we have now without bringing in new staff to support them, without bringing in additional overtime or additional pieces like that to actually support the structure. There's several benefits that help us, because as it stands, we answer 911 calls already for airport property for citizens around the airport. So that's just the structure of our 911 system. So we're going to receive those calls now. We currently transfer them off to the secondary dispatch center for airport. By doing this, we would actually be able to eliminate those delays, keep those calls in-house, and immediately dispatch resources. There's opportunities to eliminate extraneous call routing, basically transferring those calls. There's opportunities for us to have less phone calls back and forth to coordinate those responses, because now we would hold those responses. So while we are taking on some workload to a sense, we're actually distributing that workload, yeah. We're eliminating the extra workload that's done as a workaround, essentially.
Yeah.
So I hope that answers your question.
No, that is fantastic, because otherwise, you're trying to figure out who's got the call, where it's going, where it needs to go. That takes a lot more time. And if you talk about sort of exhausting labor and using it inefficiently, that is why. Anyway, I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Doer. And by the way, Cody is not new. He is a rock star. He's been with us for how many years?
Going on my 14th year now.
14 years. And Councilwoman Breckus thought you were brand new.
That's all right, thank you.
Well, I wanted to point out that you have been a rock star and you've been here, you've been with us for a long time and know this inside and out, so...
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
But new in this position, right?
Correct, I've been in this position for a year and a half.
Right. I just wanted to support this item. I'm extremely pleased to see it. It wasn't so very long ago, to my knowledge, that the general operator at the airport was answering these kind of calls and routing these calls. And also routing all the other calls that were coming into the airport and handling 911-related calls, without necessarily the experience that goes along with the folks that you now supervise. That's my understanding. And to me, that was emblematic of a very broken system. I happen to be in the airport and have an emergency myself on a plane and had to have the paramedics respond. This is many years ago. But when I think about how it all happened, that the pilots of the plane had to call somebody and they had to route it through the operator of the airport to dispatch paramedics to the airport, I mean, it was just kind of crazy. So I'm extremely happy to see this. I think it'll be really an improvement in efficiency and better service to the people that travel through our airport. I mean, traveling in an airport, it can be very stressful for people. There's departures and leaving loved ones, there's reunions, seeing people. There's just a lot of stress associated with travel. And accidents happen, too. Mine was an accident on the plane. But nothing to do with stress, but there is a lot of anxiety and stress at airports. And I think they need this kind of dispatch service. So I'm really happy to see this, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I? So, Councilman, I think Councilman Reese was up, and then I don't know why it's not turning. So let me allow them to speak first, and then I'll send it back to you, Councilwoman Breckus. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for the presentation, Cody, or Mr. Shadell. I thought it was excellent. The staff report is very comprehensive. I think Councilmember Breckus raised an important issue, right? Which is, we want to support dispatch robustly. We want you to be fully staffed. That's on us, right? If we have not done the things that we have to do as a body to, you know, make the financial commitments for our budgetary process, that's something we have to address. And that's really us looking inward at ourselves to say, "What is it that we have done?" I don't want you to feel at all that anyone's being critical of the overtime policies, forest or otherwise. We want to obviously respect, too, the work that you do. It is very complex work. It is very emotionally difficult work. You know, when we honor our public dispatch folks in Public Dispatch Week, that's not lip service from us, because we know that the work is incredibly hard to do. And so the concern then is that we're, you know, contributing to the burnout of people in this field. We don't want that. But at the same time, we have an agenda item here, which you have said you support and which you have the sufficient resources staffing or otherwise to do, which will save lives. So it's this question of, we got to do some work that we have let you down on. And at the same time, we can't risk the chaos that exists in the system. So I'll certainly be supporting it, but it'd also be a point of sort of me putting a pin in it to remind us when we start to talk about the budget, which is, quite frankly, coming up again very soon, that we've got to make sure that we made commitments to dispatch. Lot of questions going on around dispatch in this community, because it has a lot of moving parts, different agencies. We've had conversations with our regional partners, with RMSA, so a lot going on. Continue to help us by educating us about the needs of your department. And that'll be my commitment to you and to the department, understanding that our goal as a body is to ensure public safety. And that includes making sure that our dispatch folks are safe and happy and well. So thank you for being here. Thank you for this agenda item. I'll be supportive.
Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be quick. I just, I think this is just on the surface level of just really starting the conversations about the regionalization conversations we've all had as a community, that certain things need better attention. And again, ultimately, it's to save lives and give up people and take out all the barriers, right? And so I totally support this. I just appreciate to see that this is just a little piece extra that we're going to start to add. I've heard already from our regional partners that discussions are happening and they're very fruitful and very beneficial. And so I could just imagine the airport, of course, has to be part of that conversation, so... So thank you. This is just, to me, is just a little highlight to what we have potentially seen here in front of us in the next few months, if not before a year's time. But appreciate all your work. I know it's tough work. And we appreciate it more than I think you know, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Breckus. I appreciate the conversation, and I'm warming up, especially knowing your background, that you've been with the group for a long time. You know, I would presume is one who's ascended to leadership. You wouldn't do anything to harm those who you sat with for so many years. But I am concerned that you have that many vacancies at this point in time. I think two budget cycles ago, at the very end, we added another dispatch position. I advocated for that heavily. And knowing that it's not filled right now is very problematic to me. I don't think it's going to be owned by this table. I think our job is budgeting. And if we have, you know, a salary compensation problem, we have a salary compensation problem. I've worked for cities for 25 years. Dispatch is the hardest job in any city, in my opinion. So I know, you know, I really do value the hard work. So I can bring this on, but I just also want to throw, because people said about regionalizing dispatch, that I hate to see Reno lose in regionalizing dispatch and giving up, you know, what is our best focus. And our best focus needs to be running our dispatch very well and for ourselves. And I don't see it with this many vacancies right now. well and for ourselves, and I don't see it with this many vacancies right now. I just do not see it. But if it's one a day, and you feel there's efficiencies on it, I can support this inter-agreement, this inter-local agreement. But I am very troubled about how we are operating dispatch at this time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might, uh, jump in. Whether Mr. Shadell or Mr. Hodge, would you please give the Reader's Digest version about what we're doing to fill these vacancies and some of the, I don't want to call them inefficiencies, but some of the process improvements that we are making to be sure that these positions are not only filled, but that they stay filled?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Traditionally, we've actually carried about four vacancies almost the length of my career, if not more. In the last budget cycle, we were actually able to add two additional positions. So two of those six vacancies are actually brand new to us, and we've only had access to hire those as of July 1st of this year. So that's where two of those come from. Some of the things that we've had to do is redefine our background process, our hiring process, and shrinking that down as much as possible. Notoriously, dispatch has been known to hire and select people over six months or longer. It takes that long to onboard a new person to get them in the building to start training. We are looking at bringing on outside investigative help to go through a third-party resource to limit that down to under a month. We've also expanded our recruiting efforts. Our candidacy pool, as in most other departments in the city, are actually shrinking, thankfully, or not thankfully, but unfortunately, it's been shrinking. So accessing those people who are qualified and willing has been very difficult for us. In the last six months, we've created lateral positions where we've started to encourage outside qualified people to come onboard with us and try to get them not only onboarded faster, but to get them integrated into our system and contributing to those numbers, the overtime numbers faster as well. We have an, we have a candidacy pool right now of lateral candidates that we are excited to interview in the upcoming month, actually. So those are the only efforts that, those are the major key points that I can highlight for you.
Only those are a lot. Good. That's awesome. Good, good, Cody. Is there anything you want to add, JW? Nothing? Okay.
Quick question.
All right. Thank you so much.
You know, I might, if I may. I think this might put a spotlight on it. If you could just say, what happens today when someone in the airport calls 911 versus what would happen with this change?
Yeah, absolutely. So depending on the, the situation, right now, because we are the 911 public safety answering point, that call gets routed to our center. We have to ask a series of questions, determine their location. Our familiarity of the airport is problematic in itself, just because our relationship is very basic at this moment. We hope to improve that as we take on dispatch services for them. So that call would be received by our center. We'd ask questions upwards of 45 seconds. You'd be transferred off to airport communications. Airport communications would then ask similar questions, determine location, try to determine the access for responders, and then transfer or notify REMSA at that point. So now we're a minute and a half to two minutes into a call before medical response is responding. They would also be sending fire dispatch at the time that they're receiving the call. Where we hope to make these improvements is if this agreement were to be accepted, we would be sending dispatch, or we'd be sending the fire department while transferring to REMSA, eliminating almost a minute to a minute and a half of transfer time while making a simultaneous notification to AIRCOM, so that they also have their security points and access aware of the call as well.
Perfect. So that, that right there, I think, puts the, you know, the focus on where it needs to be, which is shaving off maybe a minute and a half in response. When we measure response times, we expect at least, you know, a minimum, let me put it this way, a maximum of five minutes. So if you add extra time, obviously, people aren't going to be able to make that. But with this, I think we might. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? So we're going to be running Reno FD there right now when we don't necessarily run Reno FD?
No, that's not part of this agreement. This agreement would be, we would be dispatching airport fire services to those medical calls and transferring off to REMSA to process the EMD as it currently stands in our structure.
But their fire department is running when the call initially comes in, and they're hearing it come in?
Yes. And what we're trying to eliminate here is their airport fire dispatch, their airport fire is not being sent right now when the initial 911 call is made. They're not getting it until after we've transferred that call off to AIRCOM.
So they'll be able to hear it. They'll be able to hear it real time. Okay, thank you.
It can seem like a lifetime when you're having an emergency. Anyone that knows that has been in that situation, two minutes feels like two years. So Cody, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job. Come back more often. Okay? All right. He's like, uh, no. No, just kidding. All right. With that being said, I would like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion. I mean, do you want to make a motion, Councilwoman Breckus? I will make a motion then.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item B16, as pulled by Councilmember Doerr.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm pulling this because Councilmember Weber and I had a chance to get a briefing from both Karina here and our Parks and Rec Director, and learn more about where we stand with the Parks and Plan, the Master Plan, and then how the Master Plan integrates with specific plans for specific parks, and what they would hope to achieve with this contract to finish it up. And then during that conversation, we also talked about projects that we would like to see make sure they get into the Master Plan. I think the Master Plan covers 20 years. And we also talked about how often the Master Plan should be updated. Mostly the other boards I serve on that do big master plans, like Tommao, Western Regional Water Commission, and many others, will do a 20-year plan, but they update it every five years. That includes Truckee Meadows Regional Planning. They don't just make a plan for 20 years, live with that. And what we would like to see, I think, both, speaking on behalf of both of us, is a, the, a commitment to the update process, so that we adopt this plan, but we do come in with it every five year. And then we want to, and I would like to, and Councilwoman Weber probably has somewhere to add, but I would like to make sure that during this phase, we have a second round of one-on-one meetings. Years ago, we had one-on-one meetings with Claudia Hansen when she was working on this Master Plan. And what I'm worried about is that information transfer happening with the new consultant. So it, it wouldn't be a requirement, but I would like to do it to make sure that I reiterate maybe something I said even up to three years ago. We also have some new council members that maybe missed that process, or we will pretty soon. So anyway, that's one thing I would like to see included. I'm not going to get into specific projects. I, I will tell you a few that I did mention. I mentioned having a potential park all the way down the Truckee River that would connect the gems that we already have, such as Owlwild Wingfield, all the way to Rock Creek Park. There are existing parks, but making that bike path a park too, so it falls under the rules of the parks in terms of safety, lighting, facilities, and those kind of things. We've already hired river rangers. Far, far to the south of there, I mentioned a project that I think is in, but I'm not sure, and that is the, the Virginia Range Trail System. And both of us, Councilwoman Weber and I, talked about the need to work with our partners, our regional partners, to do these parks projects, especially at the margins or within. So within my ward is the South Valleys Park. I'd like to be more involved. It's embedded in Ward Two. I've had virtually no contact whatsoever with the Washoe County Parks folks on that park and planning it out. I think similarly, Councilwoman Weber talked about the North Valleys Park, and she had the same experience. And the same thing would apply, let's say, to the Virginia Range, which is at the, is in the sphere, but is in unincorporated potentially land or, or incorporated land. It's going to kind of weave back and forth. So we want to have good, close connection, and we hope that gets addressed in the plan as integrating with our regional partners. And then finally, and it was brought up to me by one of my colleagues today, there is a park project that I did not bring up in my discussion that is sitting in the middle of Reno and that, along the river, and that is the sports fields that have been planned since 2006 with the Truckee River Flood Project. When their, I'll just go one more minute, I mean, 30 more seconds. When their Joint Powers Authority was approved, recreation was included as a component. The mayor and I sit on that board. We've brought it up a number of times. It's really just a budgeting item. I brought it up this year at the budget. So I'd love to make sure that that park, even though it might be a regional park, gets included. And that, I'll just leave it right there. Thank you.
Go right ahead. Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Doerr, for bringing those, those comments forward. I also think that what is the top, should be the top priority, is our security at every park, to protect our assets, to protect the people. So I really think, and I, I'm hoping that we move forward on that or have folks, I know we have some projects coming in for security, but we need the full array of our parks need to be secured. So thank you. That, that's what I'm hoping for.
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, I'll just say this. I'd like to just mention to the manager that if this amount of money, $150,000, is not enough to incorporate the things we've talked about, like reaching out to the regional partners, or anticipating a five-year update, or addressing security, you know, and again, it's not building the security, it's just planning for the security, then I certainly would, and I think Councilmember Weber would be amenable to amending the total budget if necessary, you know, to make sure we cover everything that should be in the Master Plan.
All right.
Understood.
So.
Karina, maybe just give us a quick.
Yeah.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
For the record, Karina Mercier, Management Analyst for Parks and Recreation. I do have a brief presentation if council wishes to hear it. Okay. So before council today is Agenda Item B16, this is an agreement for consultant services with Stantec Consulting in the amount of $150,000 to complete the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan. Joining me today from the Stantec team are Barb Santner and Mark Maldonado. They are attending via Zoom in the event that you have any questions specific to them. Okay. So I would like to start by giving the council a broad context of the plan overall, why we are updating it, why it is important for our community. Council will recall adopting the Reimagine Reno Master Plan in 2017. Within that plan, as a result of the public input process, the number one community vision that was identified was making Reno a base for outdoor activities. Along with that, Guiding Principle Six, Safe, Healthy, and Inclusive Community includes Implementation Strategy 6.3A, which provides direction to develop a comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Additionally, Council's strategic plan includes Parks and Recreation as an overarching goal, and specifies that it is a priority for this council to identify funding sources for Parks and Recreation to address aging facilities, maintain Parks and Trails, and expand recreational opportunities. The PROS Master Plan will be an actionable document that will guide our department for the next 20 years, and it will also identify funding opportunities and strategies. Okay. Now getting into the plan itself, in 2008, council adopted the Recreation Facilities Plan that you can see here on your left. This document unfortunately was not able to be implemented due to the Great Recession, and while not fully representative of our needs and opportunities as a department today, it is still relevant, and we were able to use it as a base for this Master Plan. In February of 2021 is when staff had the ability to start working on the Master Plan, and since then, as part of the update, staff has completed the following steps. We've conducted an inventory of existing facilities and amenities, stakeholder outreach meetings, we've conducted a gap analysis, we have prepared a draft plan, including an evaluation of parks, recreation, open space, trails, facilities, urban forestry, and maintenance, and we've worked to identify potential funding sources. In addition to this, there were several opportunities for public input, which I will provide more details on. But we are now at the stage in this process where it is time to memorialize the outreach that we've done and work with a consultant to accomplish the goal of finishing the plan. So as I mentioned before, here are the public input opportunities. There were a total of nine, of which the General Citizen Survey yielded the greatest amount of responses. Staff has provided regular updates via the Council Comms Newsletter, as well as via memo, to keep council apprised of the project. But now we have reached the point in time where we need to bring on a consultant to finish this plan. Staff, as part of the process, did issue an RFQ and did not receive any responses. So per NRS, staff then engaged with Stantec Consulting directly to perform the work. Okay. So diving into the agreement itself, you can see here, this is an overview of the consultant's scope, work, scope of work and timeline. It is best practice for Parks and Recreation Agencies to retain the services of a consultant when developing a Master Plan of this type. When completed, this Master Plan will be an actionable document and will help us bring our vision for the community to life. As I mentioned before, this is an agreement not to exceed $150,000. Funding has been identified between the Ending Fund Balance and General Fund CIP, and if approved by council today, the project timeline estimates adoption of the final plan document in February of 2023. Stantec is a team of landscape architects, urban planners, facility planners, and they are specialists when it comes to funding and community engagement. This project will be led by Barb Santner in their Reno office, and will be supported by Stantec's national resources and expertise. You can see here, the consultant's scope is broken down into four phases: discovery, plan development, recommendations, plan delivery, and adoption. But more specifically, the consultant will provide an independent assessment of the plan, a fiscal analysis, and recommendations and strategies for the plan. So to summarize, the next step to complete the Master Plan is to hire a consultant with expertise in this area. Stantec will confirm the work already performed by staff and will provide an unbiased analysis and independent evaluation resulting in the final plan document for guidance and implementation. Staff recommends approval of this agreement. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Wow. I am so impressed.
Thank you.
Because most people probably don't know that you started out as an intern in my office. And look at you today.
Thank you.
How did you feel? I thought you did an outstanding job.
I am definitely nervous, but.
And guess what? We can't tell.
I appreciate that.
We could not tell at all. I thought you did a remarkable job. You should be really proud.
Thank you, Mayor Shadell.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome. Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion if there are any.
Uh, Councilmember Doerr, I did want to address a comment you made earlier. The scope of work for the consultant includes two workshops, one for stakeholders, which could potentially include council if desired, and a second one for council specifically. We spoke with the consultant regarding the one-on-one meetings, and if that is something that this council wishes to add, we would recommend amending the motion to include those individual meetings. We estimate the cost would be an additional $2,500.
Okay, well. Good to know. Cheap at the price. I was going to say, stay out of it, and then we'll save $2,500 bucks. Yeah, right. I'll put in council donation funds if that's right. Anyway, are we ready for motion? I'm kidding. I'm kidding, because, you know, everyone would be like, oh, my gosh, you said, don't participate. No, no. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. We know you're kidding.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment before Member Doerr makes the motion.
Yes.
First of all, I thought the presentation was outstanding. Obviously, we are happy to have you in chambers, and, and we'll be excited to work with you on the project. Always a joy to see people who have worked in the organization transition to new roles, and then to succeed in those roles. So congratulations in that regard. I suppose for my part, this is part of a longer-term strategy, right? I think Stantec is a great group. They do incredible work. They've been a great partner in the past. And so I look at it as, again, another part of our overall commitment to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space in this community. Sometimes it happens to look to the outside world that it's very siloed. It's about a park in a neighborhood. And what we've done over the years, because we have had to really scrape and scrimp to get park dollars directed in the right places, is we've, we've taken some money from CDBG over here, and we've scraped together some money out of this way. And our finance people and our team in Parks and Rec have made do with very little for a long time. My hope is that what will happen as a result of this planning process and undertaking is that we will have a broader vision for all of the Parks and Recreation, Open Space opportunities, and then we, as a body, are going to have to come along and make commitments to that. Because, you know, when downturns happen, sometimes the first thing to go, and, and has historically happened, are our parks and our facilities. But we know, on the other end of the spectrum, are people who are saying, those are the most important things about quality of life. And so it'll be my hope that through this process, we will start to take all of the somewhat disconnected-at-times pieces, put them into one place, and then have a plan for how to go out and achieve the goals that we have. Because, you know, this council, for example, is the first to construct an aquatics facility, right? We have transferred the Rosewood area project into sort of a public-private partnership, but it's a new, a new thing. We've made commitments to trails and bike trails in northwest Reno. Mayor's Park is getting a refresh. Today, we're talking about Teglia's Park. I'm working on tennis courts, right? We're all working very concerted effort, because we're trying to, to sort of patch work together. work together what we hope is a positive vision. My hope is that what we'll do is we'll make commitments. We've, we've even gone so far as to go to the legislature and, and ask them to give us additional tools. We are trying to throw what we have at it, at it. This will give us that last piece. This will give us the ability to have those important conversations, and it will allow us, as a body, to, to really make commitments firmly and resolutely for another generation of parks and parks users. So thank you for all that you're doing. I think it's an exciting time, and for you, it's a legacy opportunity, so thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Reese.
Okay, anything else?
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on Item B-16 with one change, to up the budget to $152,500 to incorporate optional one-on-one meetings with council members if they're so interested. Otherwise, it might even be, this is a maximum now to exceed, so it might even be less, but that would be my motion.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Good job, team. Good job.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, we're moving on to Item C-1.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you may, I got, I'd like to revisit, um, B-2.
Yes.
To reconsider B-2, hold that back on the agenda.
So I need a motion, I have a motion to reconsider. I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was able to reach out to the executive director and confirm that they are not providing drug and alcohol counseling at that facility, and so with that confirmation, I feel comfortable moving forward and moving to approve Item B-2.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Okay, now we are moving on to Item C-1.
Councilwoman Reese.
Which is an ordinance introduction for Mountain View Estates zoning map amendment.
I'm, I'm going to be right here, I just have to ask legal something.
Madam Clerk, is, and this is a public, oh, no, ordinance introduction, so is Mr. Hall, you'll take over the reading, thank you.
Yes, I'll take it away, thank you. Ordinance introduction, Bill Number 7215, Case Number LDC 22-00085, Mountain View Estates, Unit 5, Zoning Map Amendment. Ordinance to amend a zoning map from single-family residential, 11 units per acre, SF11, to multifamily residential, 14 units per acre, MF14. The 33, plus or minus 33.33 acre project site is located directly west of the roundabout between Ferrari McLeod Boulevard and Remington Park Drive, 300 feet north of Pimlico Street. The site has a master plan land use designation of mixed neighborhood, MX.
Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Thank you, we do not have any public comment, and this item was noticed.
Okay, so properly noticed, no public comment. Let me look to my colleagues to see if anyone desires a staff presentation.
I would.
Okay, so Ms. Whitted, take it away, thank you so much.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Grace Whited, Associate Planner, for the record, here to discuss the Mountain View Estates, Unit 5, Zoning Map Amendment. So the subject site is located in North Reno, in between North Virginia Street and US 395, just south of the railroad and south of Par Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from single-family 11 units per acre to multifamily 14 units per acre. To the south of the site is all residential zoning, mostly attached and detached single-family. To the north of the site is industrial and more intense uses. So if this zone change were to be approved, the site would serve as a transition from that lower-density residential to the south and east of the site, to that higher density and, or higher intensity industrial in that railroad, to the north and west of the site. So the master plan for this site is mixed neighborhood, which supports single-family and small multifamily projects. This change from SF11 to MF14 would support higher-density single-family or a small, multifamily development. Here is a comparison of the development standards allowed in single-family 11 units per acre and multifamily 14 units per acre. So density is going to be the biggest change we see between these two zoning districts. SF11 allows for 11 units per acre, and MF14 allows for 14 units per acre. So this would yield a total of about 466 units for this site, and that's about 100-unit dis, 100-unit difference than what we would see at SF11. Any future land division of four or more lots, or multifamily development greater than 20 units, would trigger another discretionary review process through which additional site-specific standards may be applied. Here are the findings for a zoning map amendment. This project does not conflict with state law, and it's still consistent with our master plan. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment. The recommended motion is on your screen, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you so much. Great job, by the way.
Thanks.
I love this, I love seeing, like, all these new faces, and you guys are doing such a good job, you really are. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, Grace, thank you so much for the presentation. Could you go back to the slide where you compared MF, uh, single-family 11 MF14? The, the list.
Oh, sorry, this one?
Right there. So here's, here's my talent, I'm very supportive of this project, I think it's a great idea. Here's my challenge. This area butts up against what I think are single-family homes, or is it a part now, to the south?
Just to the south of this.
In the orange.
In the orange are single-family attached units.
Attached, okay. So here's my, I guess, request, and something for the developer to consider, you, staff to consider. The set, can you go back to that list? Thank you. The main difference that I see, there's two main differences, under development standards, the setback on the rear goes from 20, on one hand, to 10, and the height is allowed to go up five feet. And I am having an issue down in South Reno where we have single-family homes, whether attached or detached, and we have an apartment complex right up to the back of the lot, and those apartment complexes, I think, are also 35 feet, maybe taller, but I think it is 35 feet, and they look right over the single-family homes into their backyards, and the windows, moreover, that are facing to those properties, look right into the backyard, and there's no screening. I, I mean, it's impossible for the existing homeowners to deal with the multifamily that, so it's really about orientation. So for example, I would have no problem, I mean, I think it would address it if, let's say, these particular units were set up on a north-south, it looks like the others are also north-south, but anyway, some way to mitigate the impacts of the, of the interaction of these two developments. Other than that, I think it's brilliant, I think it's a great idea to increase the density, it's not that much, I think is appropriate, but what I would hope is at the staff level, I know we're out dealing with zoning, we can't condition zoning, so when it comes to doing building permits, and I don't know if they're coming for a tentative map.
So, just to point out, so anything with a division of lot, of more than four lots would be a tentative map, and then anything over 20 units would warrant another discretionary review. So through that process, we could make sure it is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, in the case I'm talking about, they didn't have a tentative map. We didn't have that opportunity. So it just went to building permit, and I think these are the kind of issues that the council gets involved in. So that's just my hope, and it's just planting a seed for when those, and I don't even know that the tentative map will come to us, right? It will go to Planning Commission, a special use permit, go to Planning Commission. So we may never see it again, frankly, and I think that would be just fine, but I want to make sure that you, as the planner, communicate or keep present those issues of compatibility where these two developments come together.
Definitely.
Thank you so much. All right, any other questions? Councilwoman Breckus, three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back to the map, is, is this access provided by at-grade railroad crossing?
No, there is no, so the access would come from the existing Ferrari McLeod, and then there is also a roadway that was just improved to this, on the south end of the site, that would connect the developments to the east, or from the east.
From the east, so.
So there would be no new railroad crossing.
Well, where, where is, is, Ferrari McLeod is accessed off Par, correct?
Correct, so that would be the primary access.
And there isn't an access, a railroad crossing, once it takes off from Par, in the cloud?
There, I believe there is, and the applicant is here to discuss that further, but there would be no new rail crossings.
Well, I didn't ask that, I asked, is there? And, you know, the, the issue is, is we're increasing density, so in theory, we're increasing more people who are going to be traversing a railroad crossing, right?
Yes.
You know, because we, the unit count increases, right?
Yes.
So, did you take that into calculation in your analysis of public safety and street safety policies?
So we do look at traffic possibilities, I guess, with a zone change. Obviously, there's no projects, so we look at kind of what the possibility for zoning, the capacity would be for those roadways, and our engineering department was comfortable with those existing infrastructure there.
Well, there's a difference, in my view, between, you know, capacity and conflict and safety, okay, because you got a spine of the railroad network, it's not the main spine, but it's an offshoot, it's the Feather River line coming down, it's further down, but you are crease, increasing the number of people who you're going through as you recommend upzonings, and putting more people who have to cross an at-grade crossing, and, and so, you know, do you, do you read the master plan policies? Do you do a calculation and understand? Do you have an understanding of what the trends are on that railroad line?
The trends of the current crossings.
Yeah, of the railroad traffic at this point in time.
The railroad traffic, we do not do account of those, I mean, we do look at the master plan policies and the, you know, potential traffic for those crossings. We can definitely look into that when the development is proposed, since it would more than likely trigger a discretionary review process, but we don't look at the, the railroad traffic.
Okay, because my analysis of the master plan policies are that it's not just congestion, it's also conflict. Maybe you've created a relief, you know, or there's been a relief created from the Socrates, is it Socrates that it comes down on that road?
So Socrates is, is to the south, it serves that University Ridge neighborhood.
Is that where the connection for that secondary access, that, to the south, is that you stated?
It, so the secondary access has not been built yet, and I can defer to the applicant on kind of what their, their, when they would anticipate seeing that secondary access, but I would believe it would still come from the northern portion, so it would not come from that property to the south.
Oh, it's coming from the, okay, so.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Any, any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to give you three more minutes.
Thank you. You know, sometimes it's good to have our own traffic engineering staff up here, you know, rather than defer to the proponent, because they're a proponent, and we're looking for obje, objective information. So the, the secondary access that, in theory, could be relieving some of the increase of the conflict points from the railroad crossings, is from what neighborhood, and does that, where is that street, and who's, who's required to put that street in? It's not, is it a part of a different development?
So I do have the map up of.
Okay.
The recently approved alignment. This alignment was approved by our staff, so our engineers and, they looked at this alignment, and they're comfortable with it. So if I could get the overhead, I can show you generally, but it is from, so if you see those units to the, just to the east.
I think you can touch, you can touch it down below, and you can do that, with the, your, with your, usually, okay.
It's coming up.
Yeah.
So this roadway.
That roadway.
That roadway would come from the properties to the east, and that would go through the south portion of the property.
Okay, and that is in association with what development?
So this development goes to the neighborhood to the, to the south, and.
Which, yeah.
Comstock?
Comstock Phase 2.
Comstock Phase 2, it goes to Comstock.
Okay, and so that was tied to that tentative map, then, you're saying?
I believe so, I believe it was.
Okay.
A requirement for that tentative map.
Okay, okay. Well, it's not a significant increase, but I, because I represent West Reno, where we have tremendous conflict with the main line of the transcontinental Radell Road, it is a really important issue for me to have an evaluation when we're doing upzonings or master plan amendments, to understand what increases in conflict we're creating with at-grade railroad crossings. That's really been consistently important to me, and also to understand trends in, in railroads, and, you know, if, if the planning isn't supported by the engineering division on these analyses, who is also, you know, involved in the roadways, networks, maybe they should be in attendance for these hearings also, because planning's always the coordinating department, not necessarily expertise. Mr. Manager, is it possible at times to have your traffic engineers down here also, when we have these kind of issues come up?
Um, I'm sure with enough advance notice, we could have Mr. Dietrich come, he is stationed out at the courtyard, he's not physically present.
Oh, okay, so that's, so you're planning, so, um, community development department is not reviewing, involved in, has engineering that's in the building on these sort of issues?
Excuse me, so Development Services does have an engineering wing, but the traffic engineering is done.
Okay, 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 okay. But that secondary roadway, do, do you know the timing on that?
I believe it was a condition for that tentative map.
Tentative map, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Councilwoman Weber, I'm going to send it to you.
Oh, I, I was just going to make a comment.
Councilwoman Reese, sorry, I can't see, like.
I know, I'm pushing the buttons and doing the hand sanitizer.
Now we gotta go to the hand sanitizer, I forgot, because it's not showing up who's coming up to speak, but go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for the work that you have done on the presentation. Certainly, I also thank the staff for working through the issues. Part of the issue that I sort of have, and perhaps it's just the way I view our role, is that, and then this is perhaps something that Councilmember Doer and I have talked about over the years, which is all of the easy places to build are gone. So every place that we are currently looking at having built has particular issues, and so the question is, when we encounter those issues, have we, as a staff, looked at them, turned them over, considered them? Are we just sort of taking what outside persons say is the gospel and just believing everything that we're told? Answer's no. Your, your staff and the different departments within the city really do work through them. Also important to me, and my decision today on this particular issue, is the Planning Commission looked at it and approved it six to zero, I mean, there's an absence, and each one of us is dealing with the reality of our stated goal, we have said, is to increase densification, especially into the areas where it would be appropriate. So you can't both say we need to build more housing, but never here, or not there, or every place has something that prevents you from being able to, to arrive at the conclusion that we need more housing. That fundamentally, that kind of thinking is bankrupt, and that kind of thinking really is sort of academic in a way that is, it, it allows people who already have housing to continue living safely and comfortably in their home, and then it means that people who need to have housing will never have access to it. And so the density is quite minor. Councilmember Doer has made good points about how we align projects to take into account existing persons, because we're trying not to have those conflicts where we can, but the increase in density is appropriate here, that's really what the focus of the inquiry has been, and I know the area well, I, and so have been there frequently over the years, have a family member who lives somewhere relatively close by, it's appropriate there, and, and that really should be the inquiry, and I think that that is telling when people who already have theirs want to keep other people from trying to have the opportunity to have housing, that, again, is academic and unnecessary. So I'll be supportive, and I appreciate the work that's gone into making sure that this project is a good one.
All right, Councilwoman Webber.
Thank you so much. I appreciate Councilmember Reese's comments, and just thank you for bringing it back into kind of where we're at now, so I appreciate that very much, and I, I appreciate our staff, and I do think this is a, a, a good opportunity for us with the zoning. So I'm going to move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and refer Bill Number 7215 for a. Number 7215 for a second reading and adoption.
All right, thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Nice job. Look at the smile on her face. As I lose my voice. Cynthia and I are in the same realm today. I'm losing my voice. My gums and goes like yours. Good job.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Aren't you proud?
Are moving on.
Mr. City Manager?
To Item D1, which is a presentation from Jamie Schroder.
Okay. Hi, Jamie. So good to see you.
You too.
You know, when Jamie gets up here, like, you know, it's just good stuff. It's, you know, stuff that everyone likes to see from Jamie.
Good stuff. And then this is like, I think, my next life is being a playground designer, so.
Oh, I love it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Um, City Manager Thornley, for the record, Jamie Schroder, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, the item before you today is a fun one. We are seeking direction from Council to select one of two options to purchase playground equipment for Paradise Park. Um, the playground at Paradise Park is on the Parks and Recreation 20 Year CIP Plan, and it is definitely in need of replacement and upgrades. However, um, as we spoke at an earlier item, funding is always a challenge, but thankfully, we have, um, an opportunity to do some, uh, put some unspent CDPG funds to use, and, um, the, uh, the committee reviewed a list of potential projects in June, and this one rose to the top. So there were two options that we took a look at as far as what type of playground we would want to put at Paradise Park. These components at the existing playground were installed in the 90s, so we're definitely ready to go to, um, do some replacements, as the existing playground is, for the most part. There's several different elements there, but a majority of the playground equipment there has passed its useful life. Um, we did install another playground structure that was, um, done in the early 2000s. That one will remain. It's in good shape. Uh, it definitely needs a good polish, um, but what we want to do for that area is replace the playground safety surfacing. So staff solicited a couple of different designs from Extra Play. And then what we had done is we initially said we would like that funding to be in that $400,000 to $500,000 price range, um, with the goal of ensuring that we had a, um, this is going to be a significant upsize in the playground. Um, in this neighborhood, um, it really just pleases me to be able to put something of this magnitude in this neighborhood. So Option One is an aquatics theme, um, and so it's got under-the-sea-inspired elements and an aqua-blue color scheme. This playground will include play elements for both the two-to-five-year-old and five-to-12-year-old age groups. It features multiple climbers and slides, a shaded climbing tower, a smaller playground tower, and then a ninja-style fitness course. This design exceeds minimum ADA design standards and includes both an accessible we-go round and then my favorite component, which is a zip line. This is another, um, angle of it, the smaller playground structure, and then the zip lines. And then it looks like it's sand, but I do want to clarify that that will all be ADA-accessible playground surfacing. It'll be tile, so. And then the next option is Option Two, which is a nature theme. So this, it, theme has rock tree and animal elements while using a brown and green color scheme. This playground also includes elements for both the two-to-five and five-to-12 age groups. It, it also in, um, includes the multiple climber, multiple climbers and slides, various spring riders, large climbing tower, a smaller shaded playground tower, as well as a, a similar ninja-style fitness course. Same situation, this playground design also exceeds minimum ADA standards, has the accessible we-go round and the zip line. This is the, this is the, um, two-to-five, and then the little spring features, and the zip lines. Same situation here, it looks like it's sand, but this would be the ADA rubber tile service. So what I wanted to do is, um, do a side-by-side comparison, um, and explain a little bit why we are asking Council to consider, um, Option One over Option Two. The cost for Option One ended up being, um, cheaper than Option Two by a significant amount, so we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollar difference. And you'll know, in the world of parks and rec, uh, that's a big deal for us. Play elements, Option One does have, uh, seven fewer play elements than Option Two. ADA accessibility, however, is far greater with Option One. Um, and then when we surveyed the community, we, um, we had over 400 votes, and, um, Option Two did exceed Option One, but, um, but that was by 53 votes, so, um, roughly just an 11% difference. So after you see these options, um, staff is recommending to Council to, um, choose Option One over Option Two, even though Option Two is the more popular, um, selection, um, in order for us to be able to take that 103, 104,000 dollar price difference and put that into some of the other park amenities on this project. We have heard from the community that shade is something that we need to start focusing more time, attention, and dollars to. Um, and so in this case, what we would look for, not necessarily add more shade to the playground component, but shaded benches, um, which is also an often request, so that when parents are watching their kids play, they have, um, some shade for them as well. And so with that, I have the recommended motion, um, and whoever makes it, we would ask that you would specify Option One or Option Two.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to send it, uh, by the way, great job. I'm going to send it to Councilman Delgado. Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Good job, uh, Jamie. Um, this is, this is a long time coming.
Yeah.
Long time coming. Uh, this is amazing. I'm just, I get so excited thinking about the opportunity to, to rebuild Paradise Park. As a kid growing up down the street, literally, like, down the street from Paradise to now see it now, and have an opportunity to put some well-deserved dollars and resources into a, a park that's so, um, important to the, to the region, but more specifically, of course, to the community adjacent to it. So amazing, thank you to the CDPG Subcommittee, uh, that, that stood fast and, and we're all open to supporting, putting these dollars towards, towards this project. Um, and, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the council. This is awesome. I, I don't think you guys realize how important this is. This is such a treasure in this community, um, and then just, but, you know, it broke my heart when you seen the, the dilapidated playground equipment, the, the disinvestment in the, in, in the park, just because in the, the usage was just dramatic, because, again, the playground equipment, everything else, just wasn't there. And so I kind of really see this opportunity is, is huge. So I'm excited to kind of see the breath of fresh air into it. I looked through all of it. I met with staff. Option One is fine. I love the shaded, complete pieces of it. I know there's a big gap in terms, but I don't, I've, I, I, I know that the rest of it's going to go towards other shaded opportunities, uh, given sprucing up the other playground equipment and everything else, there's just so much more work to do. So even though this is, this is a huge part of it, this is just one section of Paradise Park that needs some love. My hope is that the council sees that there's an opportunity to do so much more at Paradise, and so thank you, Jamie, to you and your team. I'm excited, and so when you guys are ready, let's, let's make it go for Option One. I'd love to hear from the rest of the council.
All right, thank you so much. I want to say thank you so much also for really including, um, you know, the disability piece that is so critical, because I don't think our parks have enough elements and access. I, I just, I see it, and we have a lot of great people working on that access advisory board, so anytime we can kind of make those upgrades to, at, you know, but I'm so glad that, like, that was a priority. And I think they picked absolutely the best option, so I was so glad to see that. And I just want to say, congratulations, Councilman Delgado. This has been, like, you know, a big passion of yours and wanting to see this to fruition, and it's happening, and I know it's taken a long time, but, you know, you have been such a massive champion. And, um, you know, I know that things never move fast enough for us, right? Because government is so slow, but it also, there are, there's a process, there's public input, there's a lot. You have to go out and get bids. It takes a long time. So I want to say, um, you stuck with it, and it's going to happen, and all because you were the biggest champion for this area. So I want to say thank you. Great job. Um, Councilwoman Dewar?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this looks amazing, and I too wanted to thank Councilmember Delgado for, for being the champion. Um, we've been hearing a lot about this park. We've seen it, we've planted trees there, we're doing a lot of things, kind of working around the edges, but this is very central to the functioning of the park. I have just, uh, three questions. So, uh, when you put in a zip line in a park like this, does it need someone like a, a park person to operate it? Or is it self-operating?
So, um, it, it's mostly self-operating, um, and so really what it is, um, if you have been to Idowell Park.
Yeah.
This will be the same type of element, and so one side is a, um, like a, a seat platform on a rope. And so then, um, you can just climb on it from the platform that you see over here on the left side of the screen, and then you, uh, self-propel yourself. And then the ADA accessible component has more of a, a formed seat, so you can transfer from your wheelchair into the seat, um, get buckled in, um, and so usually your caregiver.
You buckle yourself in, is the point.
Yeah, your caregiver would likely go ahead and do the buckling, depending on what your mobility status is. Um, but yeah, it's just a fantastic little element, and every time I drive by Idowell Park, there's kids all over it, so it just makes me super happy to see that.
So you basically hook in over the yellow thing and slide down? Is that the idea?
Yeah, it's all underneath, um, the yellow, yep.
Yeah. And then they, though, buckle themselves in, because every zip line I've been on, there's always a safety attendant, but of course, we're much higher and, uh, in a scarier position with greater danger of falling, right?
Sure. This is a much smaller magnitude as far as height and speed.
Right. And then one more question about the ADA. Um, why, why, I'm totally going to support the motion, but I was just curious, how does ADA go down? Is that the, the facilities that were being included weren't as ADA accessible?
Yep, so basically, as our, um, playground designers across the nation work to design better elements that are accessible, one of the components that you have to take into consideration is the transfer from the chair.
Gotcha.
And so depending on the different play elements, it's the, uh, the, the elevation, if you will.
Yeah.
That would allow you to either be able to transfer from the chair, or you can still play with the equipment while remaining in your chair.
Got it. One more question. I got just yesterday a letter from a constituent about senior services at this park, and that we, is it true that we're closing the senior community center at this park?
No, so there is a proposal that's being discussed right now, um, in which, but there's, um, we had a discussion at the Rec and Park Commission last week, um, in which, um, we would consider looking at leasing out Paradise Park Activity Center to a nonprofit group. And then in order for that to really be feasible, we would also need to relocate the six programs that are offered at Paradise Park Activity Center to either Evelyn Mount, um, there is, the Reno Housing Authority is nearby, so we've started some initial conversations with them. Um, but yeah, so there's going to be a public input meeting at Paradise Park Activity Center from 2:00 to 4:00 PM on September 7th.
September 7th, 2:00, 4:00.
Yep.
And just so you know, this is from a Ward Two resident.
Mm-hmm.
Who goes all the way to this park, so that's a journey, to attend activities at this community center, senior activities, and was feeling fairly devastated that these would go away. But it sounds like it might be relocated to other places, which would be fantastic.
Sure. The programs itself would not go away, but the facility.
Location.
Location would be used for a different purpose.
But it's close, it's very close.
Yes. Point two miles away.
Point two miles away. It's very, very close.
Very close.
And what I'm excited about this, because I sit on Reno Housing Authority, the partnership, that will also help engage other seniors that live in RHA properties, because it's also getting closer to them.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity to bring the services to the citizens versus the citizens traveling to the surface.
Yeah.
Well, they live, again, way down Ward Two, I don't know exactly where, somewhere in
South Reno, and they're traveling regardless.
Well, and they're a very close group over there.
That's what I'm learning.
And they do a really, really good job, right? Like, they are really close, and I love that. I also want, um, everyone to know that I spoke with Hillary Lopez about this. Reno Housing Authority is also going to do improvements to those buildings to make it really nice for the seniors. So that's another benefit and value add, to get them, um, you know, a facility that should be great for them over on that side, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, so good, good work.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, go right ahead.
Can I just make a comment on that? I attended the meeting as well, and I see it in a little different perspective, so I wanted to share that with you.
Yes.
And I will, um, individually, I'd like to share some of the.
Go ahead.
The thoughts I had, but not right now.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that you knew, because there were quite a few people that attended this meeting, and, um, it was the first time I've ever seen that many people at any of the meetings. There was probably 60 or 70 people that came out to speak, so.
Eighty-eight.
Oh.
Eighty-eight.
See that?
I know this is totally off-topic, Madam Mayor, but, um, and anything that, in my, my honest belief, because I've, I've heard some, some folks have reached out to me, and I think there's, uh, a, a clear opportunity to provide a lot more clarity and information. I think there's a lot of misinformation, a lot of missed, uh, data that's being provided. And I think people, as they should be, um, are asking questions. And so I think there's a total opportunity to answer those questions, to make people feel a little bit more at ease. Uh, there's nothing that I've heard or shared, from my understanding, with parks or anyone else, that services will be, uh, will not happen, will not be taken. I think the biggest conversation is location. We understand the issue with transportation location, and my understanding is this can be better served in answering that question. So a lot of misinformation, a lot of opportunity to, for clarity, but, yeah, I know this is not an item we're talking about, but.
Thank you. I, I, I appreciate that, and I just want to be clear, you know, I don't know who's going to get appointed to, um, the Senior Services Board. I hope it's me, um, because I, every year, I've allocated more and more money for seniors, and we want to make sure we expand on what they need. I, and, and so I've heard a lot of misinformation too, and I think the most critical piece was making sure that it was so close, which it is. So it's still right there in the same proximity, and I want people to know that, and we will expand upon services, and like I said, we'll do upgrades. And because that center honestly needed a lot of help, and, um, so I'm excited for this new center to be just A-plus for them, and Reno Housing Authority yesterday said they were dedicated to doing that. And we will make sure they do that, because we're on that board, but also, um, advocate for our seniors, because they are so critical, so important, and we have to continue to do whatever we possibly can. So, um, let's all collaborate together. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Um, I, I just wanted to weigh in on the Paradise Park elements of it. Um, first of all, I think you've done an outstanding job of giving us some options, Ms. Schroder. I think the, the Option One, for me, does certainly speak to a broader opportunity for, um, our disability community to be able to participate more fully in it. I, I think Paradise Park is quite a, a gem of a park. It's, um, a little bit, uh, needs some love, it needs some effort. I think Councilmember Delgado has been leading that charge, uh, for a long time, and, and so I'm late to the party, but I just want to make a commitment to that area, that particular park in that community, that we are going to invest our time and effort into it. I know there's conversations about, uh, moving to improve water quality issues there. Uh, I'm excited to hear about these new opportunities for the physical, uh, the, the center that's there. Um, I know that there's maybe an element to it all that plays into the dog park. Part of why I was so happy about the earlier presentation today about the master planning effort to the park is so that we make sure that although we have committed to, you know, new restrooms, I think that was last week, um, or two weeks ago, um, and then we've committed now to this, or we're about to commit to this project, that they all start to come together, and that parks planning really helps do that. I think also we've made a commitment to a, a person to be involved in that from a staff side. So all of these things are starting to, to move in the right direction, and it's a great commitment to that park, which I do think is incredibly, um, special and, and is a nice community space, uh, when Councilmember Delgado helped to add the footsole courts on the backside. I like the connectivity also to Bernice Martin Matthews. I mean, I think there is a way for us to, uh, hopefully engage the, uh, school district. When I see schools and parks adjacent to one another, I think that's always a win for both entities, because then, you know, kids are in the parks as part of their, maybe it's PE and recreating there as part of their school programming. So this is a special park, and we should make sure that we, um, improve it in every way that we can in the coming years. that we can in the coming years. And I also think it's, you know, an issue because Councilmember Delgado won't brag about himself, this is a legacy issue, right? This is the opportunity to evade commitments to this specific park, which will outlast all of our time on this body. So really cool. Option one for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah. Let's do it.
All right. Right back to you, Councilmember Delgado. Go ahead.
Move to approve option one.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Item D2 was withdrawn at agenda approval, so we're moving on to Item D3.
All right. Presentation and six-month update from the Reno Initiative for Shelter Equality, which is RISE. It's good to see you, Ben.
Good morning.
All right. Take it away, Cynthia.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Cynthia Sparza with the City Manager's Office, your Chief Equity and Community Relationships Officer. Item D3 is a brief update that was requested at the February 2022 meeting when the contract was approved. But today really we'll focus on the data, but of course, stories and the impact this partnership is having in our community. There we go. To provide a quick overview of recent council highlights. In February, the contract was approved to provide supportive case management and outreach to the most vulnerable members of our community, unsheltered community, specifically the most service-resistant individuals. By onboarding RISE to this initiative or to the program itself, the Clean and Safe Team has a peer-to-peer engagement group with lived experiences and has helped to augment trust in our community. At that time, a request was also made to provide an overview of how our outreach was going to roll out. At the April 13th meeting, we provided an overview of our plan to integrate RISE into Clean and Safe. We discussed our weekly outreach huddles where the team gets together and prioritizes cases and provides updates across the board. We also coordinated with HMIS. RISE is currently on the platform, and that is aligning with regional needs as well. Community relationships has been key, introducing RISE to our community partners. And RISE has also been instrumental in introducing Clean and Safe to additional partnerships in our community. And last but not least, resource deployment. A key piece of the discussion was determining if geographical zones would be helpful in the deployment of outreach. And due to the frequent movement of the unsheltered community at that time, we decided that it was most effective and efficient to deploy on a daily basis, weekly basis as needed, understanding the trends. And we're still operating in that way. And today, of course, is a six-month update. When we speak of Clean and Safe, the program itself has four focus areas: education, outreach, enforcement, and restoration. Today, we are specifically focusing on outreach. I would like to highlight, RISE is one of many partnerships that we currently have. The Karma Box has been instrumental in this work since we began operating as a Clean and Safe Team. Grant is a member of the family and has been incredibly flexible in providing assistance and accepting our phone calls when we need additional help. The other component, of course, I would like to highlight is Join Together Northern Nevada. And Join Together Northern Nevada, their outreach is specifically geared towards substance abuse, but we've been very fortunate to have someone join the team that also connects with our Clean and Safe Team and provides that outreach. Karma Box, RISE, and JTNN, they are deployed throughout the city of Reno as needed, of course. And we also have the Downtown Reno Partnership coordinating with our team as well, specifically for our downtown core. And while we have these partners, our external partners, I would like to highlight that we also have leadership within our organization that goes above and beyond in helping individuals, as you witnessed earlier today. And with that, I would like to introduce Antonio Gilmore. He is the Community Outreach Program Coordinator to highlight some of the stories, specifically two stories that are building community and building trust within the unsheltered community. So with that, I will pass it along to Antonio, and then Antonio will pass it to RISE.
Thank you, Cynthia. Hello, Madam Mayor, City Manager Thornley, City Council. Go to my slide. All right. So I wanted to share two quick stories about some of the people that we have helped. This is very hard work, and it essential, it is essential for us to have partners such as RISE to assist us along the way. So the first story is the story of S. We met S through one of the community advocates. He was unsheltered for 35 years, and it looks, and it took us five months to get him housed after several tries and a lot of encouragement. He recently transitioned to his own apartment after a failed attempt at Bridge Housing and lived in that Village on Sage for a short period of time. This is a picture of him at his apartment. So on the drive to his apartment, he stated, "I never want to be homeless again." He is very happy about his situation, as you can tell by his smile. So the second story is the story of A. She was unsheltered for 10 years. She would sleep near the court building and spent her days at Barbara Bennett Park. We gained her trust after numerous days of doing outreach, and one day she asked for our help. So after numerous conversations and appointments to meet requirements, A, along with her dog Kika, moved into Hope Springs. She became like family to the team. Last month, she graduated from Hope Springs, and we were honored to be invited. And that's the picture of us at her graduation. She has now transitioned to her own apartment and continues to check in with us regularly. She actually just texted me this morning. So these are a couple of examples of the people we come across on a daily basis. Most of these situations take a lot of time and effort, and we can't do this alone. So while we do our best to help as many people as possible, we understand that some people require intensive outreach, and our partnership with RISE is helping with the most resistant, service-resistant members of the unsheltered community. I will now pass it over to Ben Castro with RISE.
Thank you, Antonio. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Manager Thornley, and Councilmembers. So I'd say, six months ago, I think we were all pretty cautiously optimistic as to what this partnership would look like, and I'm very happy to report back that this is working. This team has embraced us with open arms. They've been nothing but flexible, supportive, collaborative, and we really appreciate their leadership and their partnership as we continue to grow. Want to highlight some milestones in our journey, onboarding to the Clean and Safe Team, which looked like ride-alongs, introductions to regional and city partners, really establishing what our best practices would be. What that looks like is determining how do we, how do we deploy our assets in the field? What quadrants of the city do we service? How do we determine that? Do we focus on relationships or do we focus on geographical area? And yeah, what that day-to-day practice looks like. Building rapport, leveraging our 10 years of experience being community advocates with this community, and really getting them used to what the new narrative in this, in our community, looks like as far as what outreach is, what services are available, and what options are available. Streamlining the referral process. This is where we really determine what community service providers exist in our town, what prerequisites they need for entrance into their program, and what an ideal candidate would look like so that we're setting up the people we serve for success. And then developing onboarding practices to welcome new colleagues, getting them trained, getting them vetted, and getting them ready to deploy out into the field. A couple of achievements we'd like to highlight. So over the past six months, we've had 24 housing arrangements through the various service providers here in this town. I really want to highlight on this one that 24 seems small, given the large amount of people in our community that need help. For example, our place served 700-plus women within the last 12 months. So 24 seems small, or it seems like a small drop in the bucket, but I really need to emphasize here that these are some of the most service-resistant individuals in our community. And the reason they're the most service-resistant is because they're the most traumatized individuals in our community. They have distrust issues for a reason, because they've been let down before, whether it be by other service providers, whether it be by law enforcement, whether it be by people in their family or their community social network. So convincing these individuals to trust again is no easy task, and I'm extremely proud of our team to be able to motivate them and activate their desire for change. Thirty-one ID replacements, again, removing barriers to accessing services. This is our connection as part of the Clean and Safe Program. One family reunification. And the 29 resources access. This is a complimentary service that the RISE unit brings specifically to the Clean and Safe Team. That's new. Twelve substance use disorder treatment centers have been accessed, which is huge. Five Medicaid enrollments, again, activating that so that we can opt, so that we can explore more options, enrolling 10 individuals in SNAP and two medically-supervised detoxes. This is extremely labor-intensive, especially when you're out doing this in the field with a population that is fairly nomadic. So that is definitely no small feat, and I'm, again, extremely proud of the team and the partnership for being able to accomplish that. I'd like to tell a couple of stories. First story is story of M. This is where we found them. This was the tree that they were living under when we found them. When we met M, they were underneath this tree quietly sobbing to themselves. It was by happenstance that we happened to be in the right place at the right time. We engaged with this individual for about an hour and a half through motivational interviewing techniques. We were able to determine what this person's goals were and what community service providers would be a good match for them. We asked them, "If you'd like, we can go right now, today." We got them in the car, asked, "Do you want us to grab your belongings?" And they said, "No, I want to leave that life behind me." We got this person checked into Reno Behavioral Health, sat with them during the entire intake process, and didn't leave their side until they were checked in the door. For that, that was the end of that person's story, or at least that's what we thought. About 10 days later, we got a text from M stating that they were placed into WellCare Housing, and they wanted us to come visit. So we came to visit. They looked amazing, and they told us that they had prayed for us and that we had saved their life that day, to which we had responded, "You saved your own life, but thank you for believing in us." Another story I would like to highlight, so this, when we talk about drops in the bucket, this individual is the gallon. This is another individual who also said, "Yes, I am open to services." But the issue with this individual is that there are very few service providers in this town that can meet the level of need required. So this person is not program-resistant, they're simply not program-qualified. For the last 18 months, they've been living at that tree right next to that woman's public bathroom in Pickett Park. It has taken multiple agencies, multiple case managers, both public and private nonprofits, and about six months of intense referrals, clearing prerequisites, nursing homes, et cetera, to get us where we are today for CJ. I am happy to report that CJ is very close. Well, first, they are no longer in this park for about the past month, so that's an incredible success for us, and we are very closely getting them appropriately referred to a nursing home that can meet their level of care. Again, this, I'm incredibly proud of this team, and when I say this team, I mean Clean and Safe, to include RISE and everybody that supports them. Besides, you know, easing the suffering of individuals in our community, this individual has probably gone to the ER maybe 40 times in the past 18 months, and they were stuck in this cycle of hospital to being unsheltered. So the cost savings that we're looking at by doing this intense outreach, I'm sure is phenomenal. And I apologize, I don't have exact numbers at this moment, but I would really would like to do a case study on this individual once we get them across the finish line. So the park can now be enjoyed, this person is well on their way to a decent quality of life that they deserve, that we all do. Last story I want to touch on real fast, so this is a couple of siblings, JP and R. JP suffers from substance use disorder, and R is developmentally disabled. They're, again, here's where we found them, living under these bushes. JP would not go into any facility without R. They were inseparable. So this, again, took many months coordinating with them, coordinating what their goals are for their lives and trying to figure out what service providers can help get them across that line. After about five months, we were able to get them both placed into a sober-living transitional facility. Unfortunately, R was discharged not too long afterwards because their level of care was higher than what the service provider could offer. However, and this, I think, really demonstrates the power of relationship building with the people we serve. JP understood that the best way to serve R was to complete the program for JP, get stabilized, get independent housing, and then that was the fastest way to take care of R. JP told us that they felt a lot better knowing, or they felt a lot better with R being outside, knowing that we were there to support them. So I think it really highlights the power of peer-to-peer engagement and our philosophy of compassionate care. So what to expect in the next 12 months? We, with new advancements in technology in the field, we hope to have live data as being reported from the field, expanding our community trust through peer-to-peer engagement, again, really building the trust with the community that we serve, and starting to remove those barriers of trust ultimately. One of our biggest challenges is always, if you mess up once, that rumor goes faster than, you know, if you have a success. So the more successes we have with our community, the more internal referrals we're starting to see from the community themselves, or at least the community that we serve, increasing the referrals, so getting to better understand what our community service providers offer, how to fast-track those referrals so we can make those appropriate placements and set our guests up for success, strengthening our community social safety net, continuing to collaborate with law enforcement, with the multiple, multiple parties that are all in this field of work, getting us all rolling in the same direction towards permanent housing and stable income. Ultimately, we expect increased successful outcomes within the next 12 months. So with that, I absolutely want to acknowledge that it was a very bold decision to bring us on to the team. There were a lot of moving parts, a lot of diverse groups of individuals and agencies. And I'd like to thank them all, everything from the community advocates, to the City Manager's Office, to the City Council themselves, and anybody I'm forgetting, I apologize. It's an incredible feat for all of us to be rolling in the same direction, and I'll end it with saying the same thing I told M. Thank you for believing in us. So.
All right.
Thank you.
Ben, great job.
Thank you.
You did such a good job.
Did I state my name for the record?
It's like you work here at the city, my friend.
Oh. For the record, my name's Benjamin Castro. I don't know if I stated that.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. What happens if you cross the line and work for the city?
I, you know, I am not envious of any of you, so.
Are you going to get in trouble?
I have no comment.
Anyway, I just want to say you have done a phenomenal job, and it is so impressive to see how far you've come and what you've expanded on and what you've built. You should be really proud because, you know what? What I would say, there's a lot of people out there that like to be judgmental, whether it's on Facebook or Instagram, of us, of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish and the process and all that. That's really easy to do, but you're doing the work every day, and you're making it happen. So it's easy to criticize and be judgmental, but Ben, like, you talk the talk and walk the walk, and it's impressive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. If there was an easy solution, we'd have done it already, so it's not-
Isn't that the truth?
Yeah.
But working together, and because we work together, this is the outcome, and that's what makes us so much better, and for these people's lives. And like you said, I hope people understand, it does take a long time. I mean, just to get ASA, an ID, it took us almost six months.
It's a process.
It's a process. They don't make it easy to help individuals who need it the most. So anything we can, like, especially if you need to get like an ID, that is like a nightmare because you've got to get those documents, and where do you look? And then sometimes you have to travel to California to get those from the DMV there or whatever it is, right? So I know what you're going through. So anyway, thank you so much. So anyway, thank you so much. Antonio, I just, I cannot thank you enough. I don't know, does the council know Antonio and how well do you know him? This guy is probably one of the biggest rock stars in our city, doing the toughest work. I was driving a couple of months ago, here's Antonio on the side of the street, literally sitting with this individual and she didn't have any clothes on. And you put a blanket around her and it was just unbelievable to watch. And then I came back and you were still sitting there. And then finally, because we had all sort of been on the phone, but you were there way before, you said, "Hillary, I'm already on this." You were like way on it way before I even knew it was going on. But this is just one example of what Antonio does. He is truly an unsung hero in our city. So this council needs to know, you're a rock star dude.
Thank you very much for that.
Love you. So anyway, I'll let the rest of the council ask you some questions, but it's a great day. It's really a good day, Ben.
Yes, we're making a lot of progress. I'm impressed, I'm proud, I'm humbled. We're doing it.
Good job. All right. Councilwoman Brackus.
Yeah, thank you. And good presentations, all three. I really appreciate the information. I think the twenty-nine sounds like a solid number to me for six months, to be honest with you. I have a few questions for you, Mr. Castro. First of all, is your scope, if someone just will not come in and respond to services, is it just to constantly checking on them to make sure they're in good health, they're not endangering themselves, or to others, or anything? Are you, I mean, how long will you work with someone, just, you know, as long as the scope and the contract is? Is that what you're thinking?
Great question, thank you, Councilmember Brackus. So for us, for people who are shelter resistant, it doesn't mean that access to services stops. The way that we have it structurally now is that the way to access case management and start that process of how do we get you inside and keep you there? Typically, that only starts when you join a facility. Taking the experience that we've gathered over the past few years, we are taking those services to them.
Yeah.
So if they refuse to go to one of the many options, okay, you still need your ID, we still need to get you enrolled in Medicaid, we still need these public services to activate, and then once they are activated, now we have options. Which one of these menu, from this menu of options do you want to explore? So that's the first part, like removing those structural barriers. The second part is the individual barrier. Are you in pre-contemplation about your situation? Are you in denial about your situation? What do you want? And then most of the time, when you ask people, they don't want to be out there, they just don't feel that either they're capable. For many of the people we engage, they feel like they're a lost cause themselves. So a lot of what we do is remind them of their value and really build their own self-efficacy.
Okay, so it's real iterative. And then my next question is, do you, are you at the point yet where you're seeing the housing landscape, where the deficiencies are and how maxed out that is on capacity for this population? I mean, are we at, are we, for everyone who wants to come off this, you know, outside, can you find a place inside for them to go with all the varying scenarios? Or are we just, you know, real deficient in that capacity?
Well, I would say that access to low-income and affordable housing is always going to be a barrier.
Yeah, yeah, that aside.
As far as getting people into different, either treatment centers or possibly nursing homes, we do run into some funnels there. So then while we're starting that process, again, it really is, you know, we can look at some of those alternative housing options, whether it be Village or Eddie House or Cares or Our Place, and those aren't really housing options, it's some emergency shelter. But starting the process with somebody out in the field now, that hey, it may take six months to eight months, but eight months from now, you're going to be real happy that you signed up today.
You can get them somewhere. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Delgado, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, soon to be... Ben, good to see you, my man.
Thank you.
Antonio, good job. Good job. Just wanted to just give some more accolades, just appreciate you guys so much, being part of the conversation, and then also bringing the hard and asking the hard questions, right? We only know what we know and if you're not open and honest with us with the work that's going on, then how do we change the monster system and giant right to better serve? So I appreciate that, I appreciate the team. Manager's office, just want to give some more. Appreciate the work you guys are doing in Our Place. I know Mother Hat, the team that works, they think very highly of you guys, they are providing whatever services we can. So seeing you guys as the hub of information as to what referrals and what are the matches for people, I think are really, really important. You know, just because this service provider out here does this type of work won't necessarily mean that that's the best fit for an individual and all that ends up happening is they end up going back out or they just feel that, you know, it's more disenfranchised and they don't want the support. So it's going to be important that you guys are the mind hub of understanding who, where does, what are the best services for those individuals? So appreciate that very much, appreciate, give props to your team. And of course, Antonio, the team that's out there doing the work, thank you guys. You're the face of the city in many different ways, you're the face of what we provide on the community, so that's important. So they're, you know, when they come in contact with us, that's what they end up walking away and saying how they're treated and how they're respected, so thank you.
Ms. Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to also congratulate you and the team. The things that stand out about your presentation and your presentation are the words to me, passion, compassion, and commitment. I mean, you are not letting go. And I think that is, through your, excuse me, through the case studies that you shared, I think there's a common theme, well, there's a couple of common themes. One is people in desperate need of help, but two, people quite resistant to help because, to your point, you made a beautiful point about that they have been let down by people in their life, whether it's friends, family, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's social service workers that are supposed to do this job. I unfortunately had the opportunity to observe an interaction like you're describing where it was a check-in with a social worker and it was so brief. It was ten minutes. "Hey, how's it working? How's it going? Are you getting your ID? Are you working on that? Okay." And they were out the door and I just felt like nothing happened here. You know, they didn't get any help. This was before. They didn't get the help they needed, they didn't get anybody really caring. It was really a check-the-box from a metrics perspective. How many clients have I visited with today and did I check them in? And nothing about providing services or troubleshooting or problem solving. But I see a complete change in the modality and approach that you're using and it's to stick with it. And some of, what I really see in the rest of the world are that there are barriers to service. There's barriers, you mentioned, whether it's a money barrier, you said several times they didn't qualify. It's left in my imagination about why they didn't qualify. Do they make too much money or have another source of income that, but they've refused it maybe? Or do they have physical needs that are too great, you mentioned, maybe for the provider to provide and care for? I mean, even if you aren't, let's say, indigent or on the street and you are just a person that has a disability of some kind, or whether it be physical or mental, it's hard often to figure out the system. I mean, I see this all the time, all the time, with my own constituents who are in homes or in apartments. We saw it here today, a man was evicted. We don't know why, was he rightfully evicted? Had he received ten notices, all of which he ignored because he didn't think they were real? And then suddenly he has nothing and he's out in the street and all he wants to do is go home, right? But that provider, in that case, a motel, needs to get paid also. And they may have, our sympathies are with that individual, I don't know if you heard the story, but at the same time, maybe they've been working with them for six months and they're at the ends of their rope in terms of, just, "I'm just a motel." You know, "I don't provide wraparound services. I don't, I'm not free bed for everyone." They were disruptive. Who knows what the backstories are? We just hearing one side of the story. So I just, again, wanted to just thank you. There's, I would love to sit with you at some point. There's so much more probably to these stories than the next twenty stories. But I think overall, and this is something that I think we as a council need to talk about a little bit, is what are the things that we can do to help make it less bureaucratic, you know, and easier to get service so that the barriers are not insurmountable to where they need an advocate like you and your team to be walking them through side by side with them? You know, is there something we could do on the bureaucracy end, I'll call it, where they don't need a shepherd? So I'll leave it there, but thank you for what you do, it's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dewar. Mr. Castro, Mr. Gilmore, Mrs. Sparza, first of all, thank you. Obviously, I want to hold space for the work that you're doing because I do think it is important work. I do think that the work is meaningful. You've obviously heard our thanks and good-heartedness about it. I recall when we went down this path together six months ago, there was trepidation on both sides and really, the three of you have become this, you know, sort of dream team in my mind about getting out there and starting this process, because I think it's a starting point, it's not an endpoint. I certainly don't want us all to stay too far from focusing on the fact that, and I think this is something that was reported on recently, but we've had forty-nine deaths in this community since January. And I just think that, at least reflecting on it at this moment, is an important part of continuing to do the work, right? Because none of us want that. Now the question is, having gone down this path and rode with you together, what can we do better? What do we need to do more of? And I don't think that'll happen today. I mean, I think this was set up as a, an opportunity for us to have a check-in so that you knew and we knew that we're embarking on this path together. So it'll be those conversations that arise after this and as part of this. As Councilmember Dewar said, you know, she wants to sit and reflect and do deeper dive. So that's the commitment that we'll make to you, is that we continue to do the work. I think, you know, I want you to sort of also accept that while you were being gracious and humble in the moment about deciding that the numbers weren't some, you know, hundreds of person metric, each one of those people, you know, perhaps is alive as a result of the work. So that in and of itself is reason for us to be thoughtfully aware of it. So again, I don't know if we can express our gratitude enough for the work that you're doing. The goal will be to build upon it and it will be something we build upon over time. I think RISE has done an incredible job in this community and its track record shows that with passion, compassion, commitment, we can do all that we are able to do and yet say that we can continue to do better, right? And that's part of it. I think it's interesting, too, that the next presentation and a lot of the folks in the audience are here from our Community Court program, because these are, they're related. And so we're going to hear a presentation from them and there's lots of ways in which this continues to overlap in powerful ways. So for my part, and what'll be my goal with you in the next several weeks is to meet and to really, in a non-public setting, I suppose, understand where we are failing, where we can be doing more, what we can do to make commitments to RISE in a way that would be meaningful to the people in our community, because, you know, we owe it to them. We owe it to the members of this community who need the services that you're providing. So that would be all from my input and thoughts, unless anyone has anything. We'll say thank you for the presentation and we'll connect offline.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Item D four.
Mayor Reese, I'm sorry.
Item D four, is that?
That's correct. Moving on to item D four.
Perfect. Judge Hazlitt Stevens, come join us. Like being called to the principal's office, but knowing that the principal loves you and wants to hang out with you as often as possible. Welcome, it's always a joy to have you here. I know the work that you're doing is incredible and we're excited to hear a little bit more about it. And you and I know are spending a little time here in the next couple of weeks doing a little bit more of a deep dive, but we'll let you take it away. We don't have a public comment, is that right? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Reese, and thank you, members of the city council. For the record, I'm Judge Chris Hazlitt Stevens and I preside in Department Four of the Reno Municipal Court. I also preside over what we're here to talk about this afternoon, which is Community Court. First, I want to acknowledge that some members of my team are here this afternoon and I appreciate their presence, I want to acknowledge their presence. And the common thread you'll have, you'll see with these people is the generosity of spirit and the compassion that is required to work with the population we are working with and the compassion that they bring to court every single Wednesday that we meet with our unsheltered population here in Reno, and that's the work that we are doing. So what is Community Court and why am I showing you a picture of the downtown Washoe County Library instead of the courthouse? At its core, Community Court serves as an alternative to the traditional criminal justice system by harnessing the power of the court system in a collaborative, problem-solving approach to meet the needs of Reno's unsheltered population with our community partners to provide services instead of jail time for those committing quality-of-life offenses here in our city. And the types of offenses I'm talking about are something as minor as possession of an open container of alcohol in public, remaining in park after hours, camping by the Truckee River, urinating in public, trespassing. These are the crimes that I'm talking about, that I'm referring to. These are the crimes that in a traditional criminal justice system, the police would cite this individual into the traditional courthouse or arrest this person, that person would go to jail. The judge would see that person in jail maybe a few days later, often issue a sentence of credit for time served, that person would be released and nothing will have changed for that person's life. That person will be released out into the exact same situation they were removed from and guess what? Inevitably, they will reoffend, because we've changed nothing. The court has done nothing for that person to change the situation of homelessness for that person, to change the situation for stopping the cycle of criminal behavior, to stop recidivism. It's not that the court's not interested in stopping that, it's that the court doesn't have the tools to engage this population alone. For years, for decades, courts, judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys were confounded with what do we do with this population? They're here in custody, we let them go and they reoffend. We can, some judges thought, "Well, let's impose higher sentences, maybe that's going to work, maybe that's going to deter them from reoffending." So judges in the past would sentence someone maybe thirty days, sixty days for these types of crimes with a bunch of criminal history behind them. Of course, that did no good, because again, you're releasing them into the exact same situation you pulled them out of and you've changed nothing for that individual. You've provided no structure, you've provided no housing opportunities, you've provided no structure for access to substance abuse or mental health treatment. You've changed nothing. And so they're going to reoffend and they're back in court. Community Court's the answer. It's one of the answers and it's certainly the answer we came up with. Community Court is an entirely different process. So instead of citing a person into the traditional court system or arresting that person and taking them to jail so that they're cycling through the jail system, they're actually cited to the downtown Washoe County Library the next Wednesday following their citation. So there's a little lag time between the police interaction and them appearing at Community Court. And that's vital, because we have to act on that moment of police interaction and getting them into Community Court so that we can provide them services. So what happens when they're at Community Court is entirely different than the traditional criminal justice system where they're entitled to their arraignment and of course, they're entitled to an arraignment here. They plead guilty or no contest to the charge and they get a fine or community service. Here, we start with an assessment, we start with something called a CCAT that's performed by a licensed clinical social worker that we have in our court to determine what that person's risks and needs are. We identify those needs because we have to know what those needs are so that we can meet those needs. Once we identify those needs, that person is taken through one to many of twenty service providers at least in our court that meet every Wednesday morning, that staff, Community Court. We connect them with those service providers so that they can begin the process of meeting their needs. So there's not this delay of, "Okay, I think you need this, let's set you an appointment with so-and-so that's way down on Mill Street," or "Let's set you an appointment with Reno Behavioral Health, which is down by Target." Behavioral Health, which is down by Target. They're all there at the Community Court, which is the beauty of Community Court. All the service providers are there, willing to meet this individual's needs while they're onsite and while we have them in our fold. Once we have identified those needs and risks, we develop a case plan for that particular individual, and then we structure that case plan into a sentence because we still have the power of the court. That's the beauty of this. It's not just the providers working in their own, working in their own silos, trying to work with these individuals, often who are service-resistant. We have the court that's able to work with them and have sentences that encourage follow-through with the structure that we're imposing. Community Court is working individual by individual. We're pulling them off the street. We're getting them housing opportunities. Some of our individuals have obtained housing opportunities, have obtained mental health and substance abuse treatment that have led their way to other opportunities, employment opportunities. I have people in this court who haven't seen a day of sobriety in well over a decade, who have now months of sobriety with our court. They trust what we do. They trust who we are. They know we have their back, and they know we're looking out for their best interest. That takes time to develop. We relaunched our Community Court in April of last year, and it takes time for this community to understand that we are here for them. We want to work with them, and we want to see them succeed. That's the beauty of Community Court, and we're really excited that Community Court is working in this fundamental way, person by person. I have a clicker. I don't know how to use the clicker. Community Court funding. Let's look at what Community Court funding is. First of all, Community Court was started in two thousand and eighteen by Judge Tammy Riggs, and in two thousand and eighteen, they received an implementation grant of two hundred thousand dollars for a two-year grant cycle through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. That's through the Department of Justice. In two thousand and twenty, we received another federal grant. It was an enhancement grant in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That was another two-year grant cycle. Yet, most of that grant cycle was during COVID, so we were shut down during that grant cycle. And fortunately, we applied for a no-cost extension. We were granted that no-cost extension, so that will bring us into the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year as well. So we're still under that two-year grant cycle, which we're super excited about. We also receive funding from the Administrative Office of the Court. We receive a grant of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars annually for our court as well. That's the entirety of our grant funding that we receive. That's how Community Court funds itself. That is our funding. But a conversation of funding wouldn't be complete without a conversation of the cost savings. It costs a hundred and nineteen dollars a day to house someone in jail. So if a person is in jail for approximately five days, that's nearly six hundred dollars that is saved instead by that person being cited into Community Court and us providing services, something that's actually going to help that individual instead of them going to jail and nothing changing in that person's life. It also costs, as you see, approximately a hundred and thirty dollars an hour for police to do a full custodial arrest and take that person to Carr Boulevard. That's a huge cost savings, individual by individual. These are the demographics of Community Court. You see that a large majority of our population is male. Seventy percent of our population is male. Thirty percent of our population is female. You see that the vast majority of our population in Community Court is Caucasian, the vast majority, nearly seventy percent. The next largest population is Hispanic-Electino population, and that's interesting. It's important that we have Spanish speakers in our court. We just promoted Grace Soto, who is here with us this afternoon. She's Department Four's new clerk. She is bilingual Spanish-English speaker, and we're thrilled to have her with our court. I engage with our population as well, our Spanish-speaking population at court as well. I want them to know that there's a place for them at our court, that they are welcome in our court, and that they have access to the exact same resources everyone else has access to. It's important that we have that, and it's important that Ms. Soto is here as well to provide our translating services and to provide that connection as well. You see, the participants' ages range. Quite a bit of people are in their fifties and sixties. They have been at this for a long time. They are the chronically homeless, unsheltered population in our community. We are working with them to try to pull them off the street one by one and engage in in this meaningful way. Community Court, here's some statistics that we have, and what you'll see is the biggest ask we have is housing, of course. And what we don't do is we don't say, you know what, there's no housing opportunities. We'll see you next time. That's not the conversation we engage in. We say there are housing opportunities. You have to work for those housing opportunities. We will get you on the lists for those housing opportunities, just like you heard a moment ago. We'll get them on the list for Hope Springs. We'll get them on the list for Village at Sage. We'll get them on the list for Carville. Those are the housing opportunities that we have, and we need you on those lists. Of course, there's pushback, but those lists take a long time. And I say, I know. I agree they take a long time, but I know one thing for sure. If you're not on the list, I guarantee your name won't be called. So let's get you on the list because when your name is called, you're going to have a choice to make. You're going to be called, and you're going to be given an opportunity to be housed. You're going to want that opportunity, and if you have another opportunity available to you at the time, then you could reject that opportunity. Get your name on all the lists if you can, and that's what we engage in. There are also other temporary and transitional housing opportunities we have as well. Often, we'll put individuals in sober living environments, and that's a great transition point so that we can meet the mental health and substance abuse needs of that individual while they're on the list for these other permanent housing opportunities and solutions that we have. Other asks we have are mental health services, some substance abuse services as well. You know, people don't come in and say, I have a substance abuse and a mental health issue, and I need treatment for that. That's not what our population comes in and says. They say, I need housing, and I want help with that. We identify those substance abuse needs. We identify those mental health needs through our CCAT, our original assessment tool. Those are the needs we try to meet and identify because if we don't meet and identify those needs, the housing opportunity is going to fail. They're not going, they're going to get it, and they're going to have it for a while, but they will inevitably fall off that housing opportunity. We have to meet those mental health needs. We have to meet those substance abuse needs so that they can sustain those housing opportunities that they're offered, and that's exactly what Community Court does. We know that we don't want people to end up losing these valuable housing opportunities because we haven't met or we've missed these critical needs of these individuals. So what are our discharge stats? Here's some numbers for you. So sixty-one percent of our discharges are successfully discharged. Now, what does that mean? It's individually based because different people need different things. This is not like a specialty court that you all might be aware of, where specialty courts have a certain population of individuals experiencing the exact same issues, right? So DUI court might have individuals suffering substance abuse issues, and that's the paradigm, right? That's what they're under. There are many, many things that render someone to be unsheltered or homeless. We don't know what those are. They're different things for different people. There's different things that keep people stuck in the cycle of criminal behavior and being unsheltered as well. So different people need different needs. Some people simply need the barriers removed for employment opportunities and housing opportunities. Maybe they need to get their identification documents, ID, social security card, birth certificate. We can help with that. We have people to help with that, and once those barriers are removed, they now have access to an employment opportunity. Because you go to an employer without a social security card, they're going to say, thank you, there's the door. You need these documents. Those are the hurdles that they face, and they're living on the street in the meantime. Those are significant hurdles, and if we meet those hurdles, that's monumental with this population. And it doesn't necessarily mean that's the end of that person's road in Community Court. It might be the end of the road this particular time. They might come back, and they might be willing and wanting to engage in other additional, more substantive, meaningful services that we have available to them. Some people have graduated with actual housing opportunities. There was one individual that I met in an out-of-custody arraignment. It was a traditional court arraignment. She was charged with leaving her children alone in the car while she went and shopped in Walmart. I met her at her out-of-custody arraignment. She pled guilty to the charge, and like I always do with anyone who pleads guilty, I have a conversation with that person. I want to know where they are in their lives. I want to know what got them to this point. She said, I'm homeless, and we sleep in our car with my three kids. Jaw dropped. I said, we need to get you into Community Court. She agreed. We got her into Community Court. We worked with our community partners, and we got her a housing opportunity. She has a three-bedroom apartment. Her kids are safely housed in that three-bedroom apartment. She has a job. These are the success stories that we have in Community Court. That was a successful participant in our court. So the numbers that we have, when Community Court first launched in two thousand and nineteen, before it shut down for the COVID-nineteen pandemic, they served one hundred and fourteen individuals in our community. Since we've been in operation since April seventh, when I relaunched this court, we've served two hundred and eighty-three of our unsheltered population in our court. Our numbers are well overdoubled what they originally were able to serve. What makes Community Court work? The community is what makes Community Court work, the entire community. It does indeed take a village to make this court work. First of all, I want to give a quick shout-out to RPD. It's not every police agency that's willing to go down this unique road with alternative court. In fact, I've heard of many police agencies around the country who are not willing to take this approach and say, no, we're not going to do this. We're going to arrest them and cite them into regular court. We're not going to go down this road with you. RPD said, yeah, we'll join you. It's an interesting concept. Let's go ahead and do this. They've agreed. They cite them into the downtown library where they know that these individuals are going to be greeted with a cup of coffee, a donut or a snack, and they're going to be given lunch, and they're also going to have case structure built around them. We're going to wrap services around them, so we're going to meet those needs. The reason that they were willing to do that, they know that this cycling through in and out of jail doesn't work because they see it on the street. They are the boots on the ground that see these individuals go to jail because they arrest them, come right back out and reoffend, and they don't know what to do either. This is why RPD was so willing to go on this journey with us. Who else does it take? The Washoe County Sheriff's Office, who provides lunches to our participants every single Wednesday. They deliver those lunches, and we're super happy with them. The Reno ambassadors, the Business Improvement District ambassadors that engage. We have a Reno ambassador that comes to Community Court every Wednesday. That would be Yvonne de Longchamp. If you know her, she is a wonderful human being with a heart of gold who helps every member of our unsheltered population out. Everybody knows her, and she's a go-to member of our community. Reno City Attorney's Office provides a criminal prosecutor every Wednesday at our court. We have a defense attorney at our court as well, Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, who is there to provide Medicaid setup and get you a SNAP card that same day so the person can exit that Community Court with a SNAP card, can go to a grocery store and buy groceries. That's critical. We also partner, you've just heard from them, they're not here anymore and pointing to nothing, but the Clean and Safe Team. That's one of our partners as well. The next slide I'm going to skip over. It's a long, convoluted slide with regard to the process of Community Court. And if you really want to know the process of Community Court, I invite you to come to Community Court any Wednesday morning, and you can see the process in effect. This is a little bit of a convoluted document, but I am going to invite you to our open house in just a minute. What else makes Community Court work are community partners. These are our providers that staff members of their organization every single Wednesday, and that's a big ask. You know, these organizations, like many organizations in our city and all across the country, are understaffed, and yet, they are able and willing to send staff members from their organizations every Wednesday so that we meet the community's needs. Some of these organizations, we have all the Medicaid MCOs, we have Health Plan of Nevada, WellCare, Silver Summit Healthcare, and we have Molina Healthcare. Those are the four Medicaid MCOs, and they show up every single week to make sure that the community's needs are met. We have Catholic Charities that shows up every week, Hopes, Volunteers of America, the Clean and Safe Team, also Food Bank. Immunized Nevada was one of our providers and still is. They provided vaccination clinics, especially during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and that was fantastic. We were really happy about them. We added new partners, and we're adding new partners all the time in our court. We just recently added the Northern Nevada Literacy Council to our Community Court. That helps people achieve literacy goals and perhaps get their GED as well. We also recently added Nevada Legal Services. That is a big ask in our court. You know why? Nevada Legal Services helps them clear evictions off their record. That leads the road. That paves the road to housing opportunities. They also are able to clear criminal histories that are also hurdles and the way to housing The other thing that we recently started in our Community Court, which we're really thrilled about, all of us wanted this. We wanted treatment, but we wanted treatment onsite. We don't want to push people off to treatment and set appointments for treatment. We wanted it onsite. So we, thanks to Joshua Germstad right here, who partnered and reached out with Renovation Mental Health Services, added a treatment component to our Community Court. We have treatment every Wednesday morning at eleven o'clock provided by Renovation Mental Health. It's called the Treatment Readiness Program, and this is a friendly treatment setting. This is a place where people can talk about psychosocial issues, what's going on in their life right now. They can take a deeper dive into mental health and substance abuse issues if they choose to. We started out with maybe a couple people in our Treatment Readiness Program. Last week, we had fourteen people in our Treatment Readiness Group. People are excited and engaged in this Treatment Readiness Group. This is a group for those who are dual-diagnosed, diagnosed with both a substance abuse and a mental health issue, and this is the place for them. And what it acts as is really, Treatment Readiness Program is going to serve as a warm handoff to an intensive outpatient program that is also being created specifically for Community Court by Renovation Mental Health Services. So Renovation is currently in the process of creating an IOP group for our population, and they're going to, this is going to be a handoff from the Treatment Readiness Program directly to the IOP program. The IOP program will be approximately eight weeks long, and it'll require about six hours of contact a day. The conditions of the group or how you meet the group is you have to have some sort of stable residency, and that can include living at the shelter. That can include living at transitional housing. That can include living at substance abuse housing and any nature of things like that as long as there's some stable bed you're staying at. And you have to be duly diagnosed. You have to have a co-occurring disorder, substance abuse and mental health disorder. We are so thrilled to have this component in our court because that's what's missing in a lot of courts across the country. Community Courts have been around for over thirty years. The first one started in Red Hook, New York, Midtown Manhattan, and they have been popping up all across the country. Our started, as you heard, in two thousand and nineteen. But these courts, to my understanding, don't have this therapeutic component embedded in their court. In fact, we were recently honored with being asked to present at the National Association of Drug Court Professionals because of this treatment component that we embedded in our court, because this is a novel approach to have treatment actually in our court. And we were happy to have that opportunity to speak with our treatment component. We also partner with Clean and Safe Team. That's a big partner of ours, and we partner in two ways. Number one, we partner with community outreach. We go out with the Clean and Safe Team. We do the community outreach. We meet our population where they are, and we connect with them in order to provide services however we can. We also provide access to the material for Community Court. We let people know about Community Court all the time. This is important. You don't need a case to come to Community Court. You don't need a criminal case. You don't need an active case. Everyone in our community is welcome to access the services available at Community Court, and we tell people that. We do the outreach. I do my own outreach. I walked out by the river at lunchtime, and I meet our population, and I let people know, here's Community Court, here's what we do. You don't need a case. Come and join us any Wednesday you want so that you can access the same services. And the beauty of Community Court, it's a one-stop shop. All the providers in our community are there at Community Court. You can go around the tables and talk with any one of them. You don't have to get a bus pass to go all around Reno, talking to all these individual providers. The other reason we partner with Clean and Safe Team is they identify our community service spots that we do community service at. Some of our individuals need a little motivation in order to make sure they're following through with the programs that we do. So I allot community service sometimes, and community service is done through identified sites with Clean and Safe Team, and those are usually abandoned encampments or service requests by the community. So Clean and Safe Team will identify those spots, and our community service participants will go out and perform community service. In fact, they're doing community service right now. We have at least one person, if not more, doing community service right now. These are some of the community events that we've had at Community Court. We have all the time affordable housing workshops because, again, that's the big ask. That's the number-one thing that everyone wants. Who puts on these housing workshops? Yvonne, because Yvonne de Longchamps, the one of the ambassadors, is the one most knowledgeable, in my opinion, about all the housing resources here in Reno. And so Yvonne puts on these affordable housing workshops for anyone who wants to come. I go. I go because I learn something every single time. If I have a free moment, I'll dip in, I'll sneak in, and I'll sit down, and I'll listen to Yvonne about all the housing resources that are available in Reno. And there are resources available. She gets people housed every day, and I'm so She gets people housed every day and I'm so thrilled with the work she does. The other thing we have done and will continue to do is put on job fairs so that our participants can have access to employment. We have had great success with our job fairs. We're going to be putting on another one soon. The thing that we really did and we were really proud of during the COVID-19 pandemic, when it was raging in our community, we had vaccination clinics. Immunized Nevada came in and loved coming into our court. Sometimes they came in weekly to provide COVID-19 vaccinations, booster shots and flu shots to our population. And you know what? Some of them were resistant at first, but they said, heck, they're here. I might as well do it. And they would go ahead and go over to the vaccination clinic that was on-site and they would go ahead and get vaccinated. And that's important because the vaccination might be another hurdle to housing. In fact, Hope Springs requires vaccination proof in order to get on that list. So we were thrilled that they were able to come. We're going to be holding another vaccination clinic soon. Finally, the last slide I want to show you is this. We have an open house, not on May 18th, because this slide was provided from our last time we were going to present before you. Our open house is going to be next week. It's going to be August 31st, 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock in the downtown library. I know you're busy. I know that you probably have a city council meeting exactly at that time. But I want to invite you to community court anytime you're free. Any Wednesday morning that you would like to come to community court, you are invited. You will be our honored guest at community court and you will see community court in action. You will see the providers, you will see the participants and you will see the engagement that we do every single Wednesday. 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock, you know, that's the best time because that way the participants will be there, all the providers will be there and it will be flowing at that point. If you come too early, we're just getting started and it'll be too early. So 10 o'clock is a great time to come to community court and see exactly what we're doing. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your time and attention this afternoon and your interest in community court. I think this is something that Reno could be and should be proud of. It's an opportunity to engage with this most vulnerable population that we have in Reno and I'm glad to be serving the population in this way. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
All right. Well, excellent, excellent presentation. And you can clearly tell how passionate you are. I mean, honestly, I think you are the perfect person to be there because you care so much about what you do. I got to tell you, I was worried when Judge Riggs left because we worked on that grant together. And we were just like, you know, we were so concerned that we wouldn't be able to have a community court. And I remember when she called me and she was almost in tears. And so I thought to myself, oh my goodness, she is like the perfect person to be heading up this community court. Who are we going to find? And you have embraced this and taken it on to be your own. And clearly, you work with a team of people that, I mean, they wouldn't be here today if they didn't respect you and really enjoy working with you. But you do some of the most important work in the community. Not to mention, I don't think people realize how much money you save our community by getting in early and the interventions that you do. And congratulations, that is awesome. That is so good. That's exactly the kind of thinking that you need is just, you know, being innovative and different. We don't have to follow the same mold. So good job. I love that. And going to them is, but you're treating people with kindness, compassion, getting them services because those co-occurring disorders are really some of the most challenging. So I just, I want to say thank you so much, you Judge Hazlett Stevens. You are amazing and you are the perfect person to sit in that seat.
Thank you, Ms. Shevy.
And visit you. So I'm going to ask, do you have any questions, council members? Go ahead, Councilman Reese.
Thank you. Judge, it's really great to hear about some of the ways in which you've made your own imprint on the court. But I do think it's, like the mayor said, it's a team effort. And I know that you acknowledge that in a way that's very powerful. Part of, and I have had the privilege of coming to court and seeing it. I'd like to come again. I think I'll make a scheduled arrangement to do that. One of the things that I want us always to be doing is thinking about how we, as a body, can be supportive of our municipal court. So it's important to me that we have that connectivity. I've been honored to come to a number of the graduations for the specialty courts. And so I think they all have a role, right? And so it's very exciting for me to see you who are taking the lead on this. I know you were the prosecutor in that court beforehand.
I wasn't. That was actually Ms. Genoli sitting right here, one of the original people that stood that court up on its feet.
Well, and I don't mean the standing up of it, but you were on the other side of the bench.
Yeah, I sure was.
Yeah. And so what can you say about now having seen it from both sides? Do you know what I mean?
I think that's a wonderful question and it speaks to what I said earlier. I was a prosecutor for 12 years with the city and I dealt with this population, just like Ms. Genoli dealt with this population, before community court. And I was one of the ones that was confounded. What do we do? We're not making a difference. What can we do to help? We knew, I knew, jail time was not the answer. And we didn't have the answer. So the tools we were using would not work. And some judges would try to be creative and think outside the box and I tried to recommend it too. How about treatment? How about we order treatment? But if you order treatment, you have, we have to understand, this population is living at the base of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Their concerns are food, shelter, drinking water, and where they're going to use the restroom. Those are the needs that they are trying to figure out. Those are the basic needs of human life. And if you don't meet those needs, you can't possibly try to achieve the higher needs of that hierarchy. So if you order community service that they can't do, or you order treatment that they can't do, it's not that they're thumbing their nose at the court. It's not that they're resistant to it. It's that they have more pressing obligations on their plate. Where am I going to sleep tonight? What am I going to eat? Inevitably, inevitably, those cases would wind up in warrant because they didn't complete what they were ordered to do. And what happens? They end up doing the jail time anyway. That was the conundrum we were all under. What's the fix? What's the answer? You know what was really interesting is, I was the prosecutor, I was a prosecutor in our court and I was, went out to lunch with one of the defense attorneys that I worked with, one of the legal defenders. His name was Patrick McGinnis. He's actually one of the prosecutors now in the city. We went to lunch and we were talking about this exact issue. We posed the question to one another, what can we do to help? You're a criminal prosecutor, he said, you work with the city. I'm one of the legal defenders. We have to be able to do something that moves the dial in some way. What we're doing is not effective. We both came up with this idea of community court, predating what Judge Riggs did. And I do not want to take anything away from Judge Riggs, please, believe me. But we had both been reading about community courts all across the country. We had both been studying them, studying this idea of restorative justice in community court. And we thought, this is the answer. We actually left that lunch date, me wanting to go back to the office and start posturing it with Carl Hall, the city attorney, see if he would buy into this and staff this community court with a prosecutor. We were going to select a judge to preside over this community court. And that's how we left this meeting. Lo and behold, at the same time in this process, Judge Riggs comes up with community court. And we were thrilled that she came up with this idea of community court that we were talking about. It is night and day compared to what I experienced as a prosecutor before community court, now experiencing as a judge. Night and day because we are moving the dial. We are making a difference with this population in a profound and robust way. And these are lasting changes for many of these individuals. Again, I have individuals, and by the way, it doesn't happen overnight and it doesn't happen with the first citation. I'll let you know that. It happens maybe with the 10th citation sometimes. Again, the individual that I talked about that has now months of sobriety under his belt, he has been in our court, cycling through our court many, many times. He's been passed out on the street. He's been lying on the sidewalk covered in flies and maggots. These are the individuals we're talking about. And yet, this individual found the strength because of the relationship of trust that we've built with him to find sobriety over these many months and we're thrilled. And this person wants to become a mentor in our court so that he could guide other people through this process who are struggling, just like he's struggling. That's the difference, the night and day difference between what we did in the traditional criminal justice system that had zero effect on this population to what we're now doing in community court. So thank you for that question, Councilmember Reese.
All right. Any other questions? There are none. So do I need to take a motion to, I don't, Madam Clerk? Okay, we're going to take a motion to accept your presentation, but we don't need to because you are that good. So I just want to say thank you so much for coming. I look forward to stopping by. How are you guys liking it? You're really liking it.
He's awesome.
Isn't he great?
Really is. He's innovative, but completely supportive. Angie's, the whole team. I don't want to single-act anyone else out. It's an amazing team. I'm very blessed.
Oh, that is so good to hear. Because like I said, his passion and compassion comes out and that's exactly what you need. But all of you guys, thank you for your work that you're doing. It is so beneficial in this community. We are so lucky to have a community court. I feel sorry for those that don't and they're really missing out, honestly. You guys are saving lives and changing it for people every single day. So be very, very proud.
Thank you, Ms. Shevy. I appreciate that. Thank you, members of the city council.
All right, you guys, thank you so much. And listen, come back anytime. I would love to hear updates, success stories, whatever you guys are working on, how we can help you. That's another thing.
That would be great.
We, you know, obviously, we have a lot going on every day. We have, you know, so many issues and we work with different nonprofits and different programs, things like that. So sometimes we get sort of entrenched in some of the big, big issues and just focus on that. But I think these programs are just so critical. So let us know how we can also help you, how we can show up. And, you know, obviously, some of us don't have any discretionary funds at this time, but when we do, you know, we hope that you guys come back and ask. And whether it's, you know, gift cards or, I was just thinking of bringing the fashion truck over so we could park it outside. Whenever you guys, when people walk out and they could shop for clothes.
Amazing.
So we'll collaborate on that, but just let us know how we can help you. But you guys are doing amazing things. And this woman back here, she's nodding her head. She is a rock star. You are just, she's so humble. She's like so shy, but she is unbelievable. Everyone should know this woman back there because she's one of the best.
Agreed.
Best, best. Anyway, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys, take care and thank you for coming. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item D5, which is a resolution to modify the management's salary schedule.
Norma.
Hi there.
Hi, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
I haven't seen you in a while, so I feel like we're missing out. You were up here every day, remember?
I'm here to infuse your, you know, you have Norma Santoya.
Well, we were going through all the contracts and everything, so now it seems like we haven't seen you in a while.
It's probably a good thing.
No, it's, no, we like seeing you. Go ahead.
Great. Norma Santoya, your HR Director for the record. Good afternoon. I will take just a few minutes of your time. As you are aware, we are out and preparing for a nationwide recruitment to bring in or look for, appoint our next Chief of Police. This is in anticipation of Chief Soto's retirement coming up in 2023, January of 2023. During that process of preparing, one of the steps that we always take is an evaluation of the compensation package to ensure that we're competitive in the market. And so this item before you, item D5, is requesting your consideration and approval to modify salary for the Chief of Police, as well as for other positions that would be directly impacted due to this move. So one, as shared before, this recommendation is based on an assessment that we conducted in the Department of Human Resources in partnership with Ralph Anderson and Associates, who is an executive search firm that is very well-known and experienced in searching for high-level executive positions, particularly chiefs of police. They have recruited for approximately 40 in the last three years for communities similar to ours. They felt it was very important that the city of Reno take a critical look at the compensation so we ensure we're very competitive or competitive when we go out. In looking at this salary for the Chief of Police, we do need to also consider the Fire Chief, who is also tied to this particular position. In addition, we are also asking for a parity adjustment for Assistant City Managers, as well as the Chief of Staff position. In addition, in this research, we also learned that our Director of Finance or Chief Financial Officer also would need an adjustment to ensure competitiveness. So very quickly, this is the recommended pay range. In your staff report, you have additional information there. Essentially, what we're asking for is your approval of an adjustment in these pay ranges effective January 1, which would coincide close to the appointment of the new Chief of Police. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Norma. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Breckus.
Yeah, thank you. Santoya, you said that we always prepare a competitiveness analysis. When was the last time we prepared a competitive analysis when we had an opening?
Well, let me see. We did not necessarily, well, actually, we do that frequently with a lot of the positions, where we look at where we're at with positions. We have, as you know, determined that we're going to venture into a classification and compensation study. However, this is a very unique position and we really needed to do a competitive analysis for this particular position.
Yeah, I don't dispute that we're, you know, doing a classification compensation study because I just voted on it earlier in this meeting. And I voted on the other one that, you know, did not ultimately come to this body. That was referenced in your staff report. But, or the funding for it, anyway. I have a problem with what your recommendation is right now. And I just want to clarify how I understand it. And I'll just use a couple examples. For example, an Assistant City Manager and the Finance Director. Because those are the two most junior people on this list right now. I think both of these people, one of the Assistant City Managers, because we now have two, the Finance Director, just took those offices in the last three months or so. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So when I look at it, you've got people who just came in and both were internal and promoted and they received with that, you're proposing to bring them up 20 and 21% with this new ban movement. And that's on top of the Unrepresented Resolution that we did back in the, you know, June, July, after we closed all of our bargaining agreements. And I think you added that into the record. We brought these people up 7%?
Unrepresented employees did receive 7% commensurate with the unionized employees increases.
Did they also get a co-op on top of that or did the bans move?
The bans, so let me clarify. What we are asking here is for a adjustment in the pay ban for the classification.
I understand that.
Not the incumbent.
So can I?
Oh, wait, who's jumping in?
So I'm jumping in. So Carl Hall, City Attorney. So I think we're getting a little off the agenda here and we can't talk about individual people. There's notice requirements. So if we can kind of just keep it on.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. So what I'm seeing here is an understanding of people in this list and/or positions that are jumping up 27%, maybe 30% since June. Some of those people are new, and I won't say it, they are new occupants of those positions. Some, like our chiefs, have been here sometime. I am not comfortable seeing any position jump up above 25 or 30% in one year without, of course, doing a class and compensation study, which we've been trying to do for four years. It is very problematic to me. And I spoke to the recruiters about this. I understand the need to, you know, maybe be market, you know, look at the market. But for me, I don't understand why an approach wasn't taken to say, the current income, the range is 200 to 268. The incumbent is 280 or, you know, 215, whatever. There is a willingness to bring in within the range, at all points on the range, and we have a class and compensate. That's how I see it occur. But you're recommending on this item, a total cost with this resolution of $400,000 on this budget, FY?
No, the total cost for all of these, for changing the pay ban for the position, classifications, is $240,000 in fiscal year '23.
Yeah, that to me, oh, are you going to, am I stopped? Okay.
We're over.
Okay, I'll just continue my line when I, range, to speak. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for recognizing me and for observing the formalities of the rules of our chambers without being dramatic.
and for observing the formalities of the rules of our chambers without being dramatic about it. The reality is, is we live in a difficult employment era. And so I want to defer to you, Ms. Santoyo. As I read it, because I pay attention to The Wall Street Journal, CNBC, you know, different publications, my understanding is that at this time in this country, 44% of all employers are currently seeking jobs, right? And the number one thing that they're asking about is salary, right? We have people who are talking about the Great Resignation. We're dealing with issues across all segments of society where wages and inflation are starting to impact people's choices. So for my part, what I want to do is make sure that we are the best place to work in this community and that the folks who work for us are fairly and well-compensated. Does that mean I want to be out of any range? No, I think those ranges are a nice touchstone for sort of understanding how we are competitive. But I think, again, and I'll defer to your judgment as a person in the HR profession, we have to, as employers, which is the function in which we're really observing these conversations today, we have to be thoughtful and respectful of the way in which the employment landscape has changed. And if we aren't, we're going to lose people. And we're not going to attract good people. And we're not going to hire the people that we need to hire. So just saying artificially, I don't like some percentage because the percentage seems high, that's anathema to me to good HR practice. Tell me a little bit from your experience as an HR professional, what you're seeing in the HR landscape and why perhaps this attempts to address that.
So as the HR Director, I'm bringing this forward because I think we, we need to make this adjustment to be competitive in this very challenging, ever-dynamic labor market. I make that recommendation in addition to, you know, hearing this from our executive recruiter where they see what is happening out there, but how difficult it is to find the right talent that is specifically going to serve the needs of our city here at Reno.
Well, and I think perhaps I would ask it in a slightly different way in as much as you are the tip of the spear as you look out into the world and think about recruitment. How do we find people to stay here or come here initially? Then how do we keep them? How do we make sure that their job satisfaction matches their expectations for their work-life and salary, right? And so in that regard, I take it to mean that your recommendation is based on all those factors, meaning how do we attract someone to be the next Police Chief to this community? Well, one of those factors is obviously pay, right? So are all those things that go into that really? The question about how do we, you know, honor our employees?
Yeah, well, one of them is pay. But the other part of it too is, is, is we also have to take care of those employees that are here and performing highly complex work. And so that's the reason for that parity correction, I guess, or improvement that I'm asking for. I'm not sure if I answered your question. Okay.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
Just, I do have an MPA and a master.
You what?
A Masters in Public Administration, which we study this kind of stuff. So I just had a question following up. So I think you answered the question earlier that if I looked at, I read your memo, and it sounded like throughout last year, we gave a nine, nine and a half percent, right? 7% and a two and a half percent earlier in the year, right?
Yes, this group did get two and a half percent costs, and then a seven.
Right, so that's nine and a half.
That's correct.
And then I just wanted to understand. I understand the need to maintain parity amongst these classifications. So my question is, just first on the Police Chief. So aside from percentages, it is, it's like $48,000 increase, right? To the minimum, just raising the minimum, right? And then I also wanted to understand, how will this actually affect folks? I understand moving ranges, and often people are within ranges. But as a result of this movement, will we be changing any or all of people in these classifications' salaries? Like to move them to the minimum?
Right. The item right here is to change the classification pay band. Where the incumbent is placed within that pay band, I believe, is a call of our City Manager, so I will defer to him if he, I don't have an answer for it.
I'm just asking about reality, though. If we move it to this, I'm just wondering if everyone on this list would have to get moved up to the minimum. Are there any people below the minimum is a different way of saying it, I guess.
Well, sorry.
I think as I look at this, I believe the only person who was in, is within the range right now is our Finance Director.
Oh, only the Finance Director would be, so everyone is below the minimum of the proposed pay range?
That's correct.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to know. That wasn't in the memo, so I was trying to understand the impact.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah.
Who do you want to be as an organization? Or like if you were a Fortune 500 company, right? Like, these are sort of the ways that you set yourself apart. Like, you know, everyone in the world wants to go work for Google, right? It's, you know, culture and good compensation. But more so than that, when you do value people that work for you and you invest in them because you do pay them more because you want them to be able to have, you know, a cost of living and to help, you know, put food on the table for their family, those types of things, that says a lot about, you know, what your mission statement is when it, when you're talking about attracting talent and also being competitive. I think we're living in a very different world today because people, and certainly Fortune 500 companies, are saying, wow, compensation is not the only thing that's just the most important, right? And that's the other thing that we're changing. But it also speaks volumes that we're investing in our talent. And it is so competitive because now more than ever, companies are trying to figure out, well, why aren't people just coming to work for a paycheck? That's not a thing right now. It's, it's changed dramatically. So, you know, you've got to invest in your people. You've got to let them know that you value them. I think, you know, sometimes those are things you, you can't really put a price on. And it just depends on who do we want to be and the message we want to send. If we want to send that we don't really care about people, then that's a whole other conversation. But I really appreciate you, Norma. And I think it's also one of those things where you, you need to be fair as well. And I get, you know, people will say, oh, it's government and, you know, how dare you, things like that. But you also have to be out there with the private sector and be competitive. But also, we compete within governments. We'll compete with the city of Sparks, Washoe County. So we have to take that in mind, too. And if we want to stay up here, then we've got to attract the brightest and the best. So I get that, you know, not everyone wants to invest in people, but you are only as good as your people. So, anyway, okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Doer.
So building off what the mayor says, I agree that we need to keep our pay ranges competitive, absolutely, the bands. The question I had was, when I looked at the chart that you sent us, the proposed minimum, the proposed midpoint was the same as the midpoint, minimum, and that was confusing to me. Like, it seems like the midpoint should be between the minimum and the maximum.
Yes, I apologize. That is an error. So the, they're about, so the whole range itself is about, from the bottom to the max is about 25% spread.
Right.
So the intent there was just to highlight the middle, you know, the bottom, the middle, and the, and the top there.
It was just the same, so it was confusing to me.
Yes, thank you for that.
I wasn't sure. And then the last question on this for me is just, well, we've established a need to do it. Did it all key off the, how much you needed to raise the Police Chief to get to a comparable salary and then just trickle to everyone else? Or did you actually look at sort of these job classes, Assistant City Manager, Chief of Staff, which I'm not, don't even think we have today, and so on? And did you do like a mini-salary survey to figure out, should it be 25%, 30%, 40%, whatever the number is? How did you arrive at these numbers?
So we did do, it was triggered from the Chief of Police going out to our local community. You know, the local Sparks, Washoe, kind of what are, what are they getting? We were, we were lower as well as, as well as looking at the Fire Chief in our community as well because those two positions are valued the same or tied together within our community. And within that comparison, we were significantly lower. Then also leaned in with Ralph Anderson and Associates and, and also took into consideration the level, the difference in the complexity of the work at the city of Reno and the magnitude of the city.
So did they have salary? When you went to Anderson, the group that you're doing the recruitment, did they just have the Police Chief data? Or did they have data for all of these positions?
No, they were providing expert advice on the Chief of Police recruitment.
Okay, so all I'm asking was, for, I'll just pick one since they're, the Assistant City Manager, bottom of the one. Did you look at other Assistant City Managers to say? I mean, in other words, like a minimum, mini-salary survey to say, this seems reasonable? How did you do it?
So also, yes, we did look at those positions. As we were doing this research, it was, you know, you cannot not look at the other related positions. So we also did that as well. But the primary recommendation is, is driven by the need to remain parity with the Police Chief.
Understood.
But this information arose out of that research. Yeah.
Got you. Well, you have a question, it sounds like, Ms. Weber. So I do understand, I just, what's, what's unusual is that you established a new pay range for the Police Chief, which you ended up being a 30%. And then the maximum, I think, was 24%. But then I didn't, I, what I didn't understand is why you didn't just use that then percentage increase and apply it to the rest? And so why did then, you know, that was where I was struggling.
I see, I see.
All right, Councilwoman Weber.
And if you have an answer at any point, please do.
I can provide you an answer, actually.
What's that?
One of the things, let me provide you an answer. So what, one of the things that we at the city of Reno have is we have pay schedules all over at the place. In preparation for a classification and compensation study, we have started to look at, every single job should be at least five, at a minimum, each pay grade should be at 5% increments. So it was, it was formulating a model that we think can be used for the class and comp study. So I don't know if that answers your question. I'd have to share it with you.
What I asked you was, you know, if you found out the Police Chief was 30% off or 24% off, whatever, why you didn't just roll that into, and why they all ended up being different? And it sounds like in an effort to create 5% steps, it's ended up stretching out to where some of these are like 36% at the minimum. But at the maximum, it's only, the highest is 30% change. So I just was trying, wanting to understand your methodology, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, I, I do have one quick question. So I'm assuming, but maybe I shouldn't assume, that when you're doing the salary increases, you're looking at responsibilities, you're of each of the positions. Or is it comparable to what you're comparing? I mean, responsibilities? Is the responsibilities of one position different than another?
That is a component of looking at how you value jobs. One is how do we stack up in the, in our competitive market, other positions in the community or where we compete for talent? And then the other part of it is how more, how much more complex or less complex are those jobs within your organization? I would venture to, you know, argue that we, because we're the size that we are and how complex we are, should have, you know, these positions potentially earning more than smaller communities in our region potentially as a, a consideration.
Right, so you're comparing like other organizations, other government, other governments in the local area or whatever, with our, our job responsibilities?
That is a consideration in the process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing, they do a lot of studies on this. They also have done studies that if you pay more, that your workforce is much more motivated and, and they work a lot harder. So, and it's interesting, and retention becomes a big piece of it. And then think about how much turnover costs you in an organization. Turnover is a lot of money, right? So the longer you can attract and retain your talent, the better off you'll be. And again, this is where I think we, you should be proactive instead of reactive. I think in government, we are so reactive all the time. So if we're proactive, I think we're going to be in a much better place to be effective and efficient, so.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah. You know, I just want to frame, you know, my understanding of this is, Mayor asks, what do we want to be? Well, we want to be fiscally responsible. That's, that's number one. And it's hard in Nevada with our cyclical economy and our low taxes and not a lot of latitude from the legislature to be in self-control of our fiscal condition. So who thought, when we knew we were going to go out for a new Police Chief, that it was going to come with a quarter-million-dollar price tag that five other positions could roll on? And that's what's going. Two of these, you know, upwards of 30% increase to some positions, one of which is not even fulfilled. At the same time, at the same meeting, we're entering into a class and comp study where we do all that analysis. She's done it, she says, but I didn't see any data of what the Chief of Staff is working, doing in three other places. It is very disturbing to me that we're doing this. I think the right fix would have been to go out, say the salary is under review. There is a willingness to take it all the way up to the top range. So you get the rock star. She, he, you know, negotiates with the City Manager, and the City Manager comes back and says, I have to put him at the top range. And, and by then, you know, we have a class of comp that shows we're increasing. A quarter-million dollars off-budget is, for six position, is very difficult for me to swallow. And I, I'm telling you, I, you know, I voted for all these labor contracts but one, and that was not on fiscal issues. But I am very much starting to see signs of 2007, 2008, very generous labor issues. This one is probably the rock, the, the rock star, if you will, of them all, debt. And I was in this organization from 1998 to 2009 when it was not able to weather the crash. And I wonder if things even didn't continue the growth that we're seeing, if we're going to be able to weather the crash if we continue to make decisions like this of a quarter-million dollars for six positions? I think we could have gone a different way to get the flexibility to do the recruitment. It's very disturbing. And then we're not even talking about revenues. The last revenue news I've heard since we closed up budget was reported in the newspaper that downtown room nights aren't coming in and looking like they're going to pay debt. Are we going to be paying general fund on that like we have in the past? On some of those backed obligations? I, I am, and I'm throwing it out there because I know people are watching. This is very concerning to me who has lived through this organization not living within its means and watched it. And there are not many people in this building who have done that and have that long-term perspective. I don't know if we even have, you know, maybe anyone who was here in 2007, 2008. But it was not pretty. Thank you.
So you worked here in 2007?
Madam Mayor, what, what'd you ask?
You worked here in 2007?
Yes, I was. I was here in 1998 through 2009. And I saw some of the very reckless financial decisions that put us in the situation when you and I came in in 2012 and a third of the workforce was let, let go, and how it took a decade to rebuild it. And I'm seeing a lot of the same signs and thinking and discussion and obligations that that council made in those years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reese, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, you know, Ms. Santoyo, I make an assumption that you have vetted this with our Finance Director. Is that a fair assumption?
Absolutely.
And so that the city of Reno, you know, contrary to the claims of the Ward 1 member about somehow this is reckless, this is something that is supported by the Finance Director's thoughts about it?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I just think that using adjectives and theatrics and dramatics, that should be left to other venues. We're just dealing with the reality that's such a situation that we're in front of us. So, and, and again, this council has balanced the budget for the first time in, I think, 20 years. This council has continued to pay down an enormous amount of debt. This council is fiscally conservative. So the notion or the idea that it is not, that's just posturing and theatricality, which I will not stand for in my own life. So I want to make sure that the public understands that, and I think the mayor put it very well when explaining that it very well when explaining that when you have turnover, or you can't attract the folks that you want to make you productive, that comes at a cost, too. And that cost is too high for this community to pay. So I would much rather pay people an appropriate salary based on the research that you've done, and understanding that we are financially in a position to do it, rather than having a revolving door. I mean, this council, for example, had a city manager that turned over, I think, six times in a six-year period. I may have the number off one way or the other. Either it might be five in five years or six in five years. But I'm right about the fact that we've had quite the revolving door at the top. I think that we have made good choices. This is a good choice for us to make as well. And so I'll be supporting it, and I won't be in any way trying to denigrate the employees in this organization, or the ones that might want to join us, because I think we're an awesome place to work. And I think the fact that we have attracted some of the top talent, including yourself, by the way, is evidence of that. So, excited to continue down the path. We'll be supportive of this item.
One thing I do want to address, hold on, and then I'll just ask you, because if I don't, if I don't bring this up, then I'll forget. Because what we should also take into consideration is, the, below the police chief, what do we call that? That's the deputies. Looking at what they make, they get paid like some $30,000, $40,000 higher than the police chief. So, like, then I could see where you might say, oh, I don't want to be here, I want to be here, right? So, why does that happen? Will this help sort of that kind of?
It will. And in the staff report, we talked about the various factors that went into this recommendation. One of them is that the subordinate staff, this will allow there to be a little bit of a higher, it's like less than 5% above the deputy chief. So, that's a significant consideration as well, to be competitive and to reduce compaction.
Right. And you, let me just say another thing that I think is really important. It is really tough right now to find a police chief. I've talked to a lot of mayors, and it's, there's a lot of people that don't want to be a police chief. And I, and I'm hearing that they are getting pretty competitive to get some of the top talent, because it's become a really, really tough position. So, to me, that makes sense. I don't know the other ones, so I, but this I'm very much in tune, so I just thought that that was interesting. Go ahead, Councilman Dur.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I should have asked this in my last round, but does the city have a policy of hiring at the minimum? Or do they have a poli, any policy related to this? And does the policy apply to the, I think there's 44 appointed positions, you know, and I assume these positions would be negotiated, but is it, I've worked even at the county, where their policy is to hire at the minimum in the classification. So I just wanted to understand what our policy was.
We do not have a written policy, but in practice, the, for appointed positions, the city manager has a discretion to place the person in the band, within the range of the band.
Okay. So over there at the county, even within the senior management positions, department heads and so on, the policy there was to hire at the minimum. And I can follow that if we set good minimums, which we have, it looks like we're doing, setting good minimums. And then the idea is, well, if you have an extraordinary amount of experience, or something extra special to bring to the table, they would consider a 5% or 10% or something above the minimum. But if we can just put in the middle, because that's what they want, I mean, to the earlier points about it's competitive and so on, I just, I wanted to just better understand it, other places, even in our region, don't have just sort of a, well, they do have policies about this, so.
If I may.
Yes, please.
The city had that policy in the past, and we have, we have to adapt, and we've had to change to be competitive in the market. When we talk about just fighting and poaching for good talent, it's, my recommendation, it's critical to have that flexibility in key positions. And when we're talking about unrepresented positions, those are key leadership positions that really drive the organization. So, I think moving back to a very strict.
Not recommending that.
Well, just sharing my thoughts.
Just asking a question.
Move the organization back a little bit.
Just want to explain that I don't support just hiring at the minimum. As a matter of fact, I have experienced that where agencies do that, and I always think there's reasons to evaluate it case by case. So, I'm not suggesting it, but I wanted to understand it and how it married up with these minimums. So, thank you.
Councilman Bruckus? Are you okay? I'm just checking on you, anyway.
I'm just kind of stunned that, by the logic and the information that's coming forward. I think it's circular, and it's not justified. I mean, the statement that the deputy, it gives room with the deputy chiefs, where was the evidence of the deputy chiefs are? And not only that, I mean, maybe it shouldn't have been a consent item, but we did approve a rather sizable contract for a classification and compensation study for all positions in the organization today.
But you can look up those salaries, they're.
No, of course, of course we can.
Of cour, you can look them up.
No, I, I know.
Because I've researched it.
Part of the trouble is that the deputy chiefs are not salaried employees where the police chief is, right? And so because the deputy chiefs.
They're hourly and they get overtime.
They can get overtime.
Deputy chiefs make quite a bit of money at an hourly rate, but because they can accrue overtime, they are paid considerably more than the police chief.
I mean, that right there just doesn't seem right to me, you know? They seem part of the management team, but, you know.
Yeah, and I would also say, that job is incredibly stressful and dangerous. Now more than ever, I mean, police chiefs are jumping in the middle of things, you can't put a price on life. And, you know, I understand, and, and that Councilman Bruckus thinks that it's irresponsible. I, I'm going to, you know, try to respectfully disagree with you. I think if you also really care about policing in our city, you're going to invest in that. So, anyway, can I have a motion? I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second.
I'll just discuss is, you know, to summarize, it's six positions, only one of them is related to a police chief. Some of them are moving 30% in three, since January of this year, those positions. One is unfilled. It's a $250,000 price tag. Haven't had any discussion of how it relates to the budget that we just rolled up. What other choices are being left on the side by this decision to bank a quarter million dollars into this for five, six positions? I won't be supporting, thank you.
And I do want to just say, like, and, and I understand what you're saying and support that, but I would also say, next time, like, I think we look at these individually, because that could also help us, because there are different scopes of work. And I really want to be supportive of this new police chief and process. But I also, you know, I don't like that it's all sort of lumped together. I think you have to look at it individually, because they are different scopes of work. So, next time, I would just make that recommendation. Anyway, okay, so, I had a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Norma.
Madam Mayor, we're moving on.
I'm just checking in on you, how are you?
Nice and quiet over here.
Huh?
Nice and quiet over here.
You are nice and quiet over there, why? Just interrupt me.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right, we're moving on to item G1, which is the election of a vice mayor from the current city council members.
Okay. All right. I would, that's weird.
Selection.
Hand it to Councilman Delgado.
Madam Mayor, I'd move to elective, they would like to take on Councilman Reese as vice mayor.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I won't be supporting Mr. Reese's vice mayor at this point. I remember too well in May, Mr. Misfit, and Miss Fish, Miss, Mitch, Jerry, Misfit. And the moment when he was told that he had to come here and wear different clothes, his clothing was inappropriate, and then he was escorted by police out of the building. I thought that was a, a tenor and an activity that did not represent well on this body by him in his presiding role. And I would prefer to see him maybe chair one of our subcommittees, but not at this time, acting your, you know, absence for the next several months. I think that, that was a learning experience, and frankly, I, Madam Mayor, if I could.
No, go ahead.
I haven't seen any apologies to the body, because I think it reflected poorly on the body. I think it was out of line, and I am so troubled, continue to be troubled by it. And he was here today, explaining how difficult it was for him. So, with that, I cannot put my vote behind Mr. Reese to continue to preside until November. Thank you.
Can I just, I, I want to, I want to really talk about this, because it, what, it was never talked about, it was never in the media, and when I called to find out the full background on the situation.
Excuse me, can we?
Yes, I'm going to. Yes, I'm going to address this, because we have not addressed this. And I want everyone to know, because it was written in the media and the full story was not told. When Mr. Misfit came to council, he had made a couple of women feel uncomfortable with the way he was dressed because of his shirt. And so, in order to.
So, can we, can we just get back?
So, in order to address that, Mr. Hall, I'm going to, I want to say it because people don't know that, and it was making women feel uncomfortable. At City Hall, we were trying to do our best to address how women feel, we think it's important. So I wanted everyone to know that that was one of the reasons why there was, you know, some of this. And I think Councilman Reese was trying to be sensitive to the needs of the women that felt uncomfortable at the time. I don't think it was, you know, anything to go after Jerry in any way. It was trying to address the needs of the women that made, that felt uncomfortable when he had walked into the building. And so this whole thing got spun up, and it got spun up in the media. And now, Councilwoman Bruckus, I just wanted you to know, you know, this was, this is the, what I had heard originally, and then I asked, and it was confirmed. So I wanted people to know the truth. It wasn't that someone was gunning for Mr. Misfit, it was trying to make women feel comfortable, because I think, you know, women in the workplace, they need to be recognized. So, there's the truth, because I know no one wanted to talk about it, but I just feel like we should be transparent. Anyway, and I believe you and I are going to meet with Mr. Misfit, right? Carl, see, Carl's upset now. But sometimes we can, you know, we can sort of override that stuff, because I think it needs to be said, so. Anyway, go ahead.
Councilmember Reese is the person for the job.
Thank you.
And has done a great job in the past. So, I absolutely seconded it.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye? All those opposed?
Post.
Motion carries.
All right, so with that, we're going to open the redevelopment agency board. I will go ahead and take. Roll call. Councilmember Bruckus, Dur.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber. Ward 5 vacant at this time, Reese. Chievy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board. We're moving on to item L2, which is public comment. I have none. Item L3 is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item L4 is approval of the July 27th.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Item L5 is agency board comments.
Anything?
Nope.
No?
Okay. Item L6 is closing public comment, which we have none, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we're moving back to our regular agenda for item H1, which is city council comments.
Nothing?
I'll give one comment. We had an amazing journey on Monday with Western Nevada Development District. We had about 20 members come and tour all of the apprenticeship training programs. We took three different tours, we met up at the electrical for some additional comments. People loved it. So if you do get a chance to visit on your own, which I, I know many of you have, encourage that. Furthermore, several of our member agency have gotten huge grants recently, 14 million, 27 million for various things like broadband. So I feel like WNDD is doing its job, they're paving the way to get these kind of grants into our communities. And I'll remind you, we ourselves got a $5 million grant for wastewater development out at Reno Stad because of WNDD's help. So, yay, team. Yep.
Motion to adjourn then, I believe.
Oh, we, we do have one public comment, for closing public comment, J1, which we'll play right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Dave Rudens. I want to basically complain about Virginia Street. I think it's completely ridiculous what the city has done to accommodate these skaters and bicycles for people who live here, trying to use Virginia Street as a daily means, is very difficult. And it's not being used enough to justify restriping it and doing all the nonsense that was done. I don't have a problem with skaters. There could have been another way to stripe that and put all the barricades up. I think it's pathetic for the tourism and the locals. Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, and your favorite motion of the day. She is absent at this time.
Aye.